I would like to call the July fourteenth, two thousand twenty town council meeting in order. I would like to welcome Tracy Henline, who is filling in for Michelle Stipes, who is our clerk. I would like to take a moment of reflection, reflection on the state of the world, state of the town, state of the families. So if you take a few minutes just to reflect on things that are near and dear to you. Thank you. Could you please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance? I'm going to ask Steve Hopper, the people's lead flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Hopper?
Yes, I have three there. And the first one I have is on the section five, introduction and presentation. And at that time, we are going to make a presentation to Al Bowman, and so that he does not have to spend the whole night here with us, even though I'm sure he would like to. We, I would like to have that moved before the public hearing. The second thing I would like, if you look under section eight, discussion and action of mayor and council, if you look at number one, is that is concerning Magnolia Point, and also number two is concerning Magnolia Point. Now, you can see Mr. Stipes is not here tonight, and he has been very much involved in this. And I would like, he would like to be here to vote for this. And I've also talked to the contractors, and they have agreed to push this back until our next meeting on the twenty eighth. So I would like to do that for number one and two under A. And under number three, the thing with Gay and Neil, that has already been accomplished, so we will not have to do that tonight. The third thing I would like to put to the agenda, if you look over here on number eleven, the closed meeting, this is also going to be tabled until our next meeting on the twenty eighth. And again, one important thing is that we have all council here for that. So, Mr. Mayor, those are the three changes I have, and I'd like to present that as a motion to make a change.
I'll second that.
Motion is second.
Yeah, and I'd just like to make one comment. For the Magnolia Point, discussion, action by mayors under one and two, that was actually a request initially by their engineer to postpone this until all of council is present.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question, because you say you don't want the closed meeting tonight, is that correct?
They asked, they, whoever they are, PPEA asked to table it tonight.
Okay. I want to make a comment about, I know we're not going to an enclosed meeting, but I would like it to be open for next time, we're not giving a presentation on the plans that were really approved. Town even made a video about when we'll be in the park. And a guaranteed maximum price, why is this closed meeting? Question mark. Are we going to be negotiating guaranteed maximum price? Is that a matter of opinion? I guess that was my concern, that if we are not really changing any of that, why isn't the public, open to the power?
We, all of our PPEA meetings, I believe, who were discussing price and contracts have been closed. And it's, and it's no decision. I mean, they're going to tell us, they're going to give us a price, we're not doing anything on it for a while, if we do anything at all on it.
The PPE meeting, or the group that is running, the people that are running that committee are elected officials, and then, well, you guys show up, which is an elected official.
It's one elected official and one appointing member of the court hall.
Yeah, one citizen in the town. He's not an elected official, and then the rest of the people are town people that are stop paid by the town of Christiansburg people. So, in reality, you only have one citizen input in there. That's not fair to the rest of the population of the town of Christiansburg.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. I understand your comments on it, but that is not the decision-making body. That was the body that was assigned and appointed to gather the information. The decisions and everything else that we made in public meetings are voted council, with input from the citizens.
Right. And again, I'll reiterate what the mayor said, the PPEA committee is this recommendation committee. This council, which you're a member of, can go into closed session and renegotiate, which I think you mentioned last night, you wanted options. Hopper presented that during our next meeting, so of course we'll be negotiating probably proprietary information that night as well.
Well, Ms. Hicks, you feel, probably feel the same way as we do, that those figures are going to, they're not stable right now, they're going to maybe go up and down, and we don't want to have that related to the public right now, until we get something a little bit more solid.
Okay. We got a motion and a second on the table. Madam Clerk, this is to the amendment.
I do have a comment about number eight.
Okay. The who?
Number eight.
Okay.
Okay. I know it's nice for six members to be here, possible, but I think if I never sit on this board, I didn't make a decision on to approve a visitor, Alan's one, and two.
Okay.
So, again, I don't agree with movement.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
I'm sorry, I have to think about this one. This, this will come back to town council in two weeks, the Magnolia Point, correct?
But, Tom, we are not, we're going to, we're voting on the amendment, then let's take them one at a time.
Yeah.
So how about A, under Mr. Bowman, to move him first?
Or not.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Call, call a motion.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater?
Aye.
That's fine, thank you. Section eight, which is the one and two, which is to table the Magnolia Point subdivision discussion for two weeks. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater?
Aye.
That's fine, thank you. Section eight, which is the one and two, which is to table the Magnolia Point subdivision discussion for two weeks. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater?
Aye.
And I'm, Ms. Hicks, I missed your vote, was it no or aye?
Aye.
Okay. So it's four one. Thank you. And the last is the, oh, number three, I don't think we need to vote on since we passed it last week, I don't know how it got back on the agenda, but I'd like to table, I would like to just take it off that, off the agenda.
I have another adjustment, if that's okay. I would like to make another adjustment to the agenda.
Let's get these, let me get through this part of it first. All right. On the floor, to table the closed PPEA closed session. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater?
Aye.
That is, okay. Ms. Hicks?
There is an item under the number four, consent to the agenda, and I would like to ask a question to our lawyer about letter D under the consent agenda.
We will get down, we hadn't gotten to that one yet, we've just amended.
Well, I don't know if I have to, I don't know if I will have to, I would like to have that item separated.
Yeah, we'll do that. When the time comes, we will, we're not at that point of the agenda. And we got two, two, four public hearings, so that's probably about two hours from now. But it will be acted on at that time. All right. So.
What exactly were you asking with D? I'm unsure.
Well, I would like to separate it, because.
It is separated.
Well, I know, but we, I want to make sure that we vote on it separately, if that's okay.
Which one is it? D?
Yeah.
Smart room?
She's just moving it, removing it from the vicinity agenda, and she wants to agree that be her.
I assume that's because you own property in the vicinity?
Yeah, well, I, and I don't even know how, you know, if that will even be considered to be to close. I just, I figured I'd rather be safe than sorry.
It is a street prop project, so I, it's one of those things, if you want to abstain, I take it you want to abstain, and I don't think it's really any harm in that.
Yeah, if it might have an impact, it probably would be wise.
Well, it shouldn't have an impact, because it's far away from me, but it's kind of like half of a block away from one of our properties, and another half of a block away from another one of our properties. So it shouldn't have an impact on us, because the reality is, none of our people walk that way, or whatever, you know, so it's not going to impact us directly in any way. It will make it better for any traffic, or for anybody that's pedestrian to walk on there, but we figured out.
I'm glad, I just want to get up.
It's going to be an agenda item, and you can discuss it or abstain at that time, because there is potential conflict of interest, but it's entirely up to you whether or not you want to vote for it.
I would, I would abstain, but we'll get it out.
But we still touch on.
Okay.
Very good. We have a gentleman in our presence that I, that we voted last week to recognize because of his extended service to the Solid Waste Regional Authority and the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Executive Airport Authority Board. Whereas Al Bowman has served as an at-large member of both Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority and the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Executive Airport Authority Board, and whereas Al Bowman helped in the formation of the Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority in nineteen ninety-five, and has served as an at-large representative from nineteen ninety-five to twenty twenty, and led the authority's successful efforts in regional cooperation, and whereas Mr. Bowman served faithfully as the at-large representative to the Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Executive Airport from its formation in twenty oh-two to, until twenty twenty. Whereas Al Bowman has served in many other capacities in the community, including serving at large representative of Huron Valley Emergency Communications Regional Authority Board, and whereas the town of Christiansburg is grateful for Al Bowman's years of service to the community and dedication, knowledge and guidance, and therefore be it resolved that council of the town of Christiansburg, Virginia formally recognizes and commends Al Bowman for his service, upon a call when I, or in the May vote, the foregoing resolution was passed six, on June twenty-third, twenty twenty. Al? Congrats. Oh, my. He was also president of poly-scientific and some other things in his, in his part-time, right?
Yeah. Well, thank you, but I think you might hit the wrong, the name of the wrong person, but I'm not sure that's me, but.
Oh, I know it is. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all waiting an extra minute or two on us. We have four public hearings tonight. The first, a resounding request from Montgomery County School Board applicant and owner for an approximately sixteen point six-six acre property located two oh eight College Street Northwest, tax map number five two six dash A dash one seven five. The request is to resign the property from R two, two-family residential district to B three, general business district. The property is designated as downtown mixed use on the future land use map in the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. This is a land use issue. It has nothing to do with whether, with the condition of the schools in Montgomery County. It has nothing to do with whether Montgomery County School Board should sell that property and develop it. This is a land use issue. It, does this request fit this property? Is anyone here to address this, this matter? Dr. Beer, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and thanks for having us here to be able to address this matter this evening. You know, I, I arrived in Montgomery County about five years ago, and one of the first things that was very glaring and noticeable were operations in our county, and the facilities and the efficiencies of the operations. We, we were all over town, basically, and then the buildings and the actual space has not been sufficient. So then, about spring of nineteen, last spring, we started exploring other options, and we had a, a building that was being heated and air-conditioned, and actually went under a lot of renovations a few years ago, due to the Blacksburg Middle moving there. So as we looked at the space, it looked like a great space to combine our operations, and so that's what we started to do. And so what we did was, we moved our IT department there, we moved our facilities, our warehouse maintenance, we moved our copying, our testing, and some others, I may be leaning off at this moment, but, you know, pretty much we've revived that, that property over there, and we've done some, some renovations ourselves that really are nice. We've actually added a professional development room in the old auditorium or library, whichever, depending on when you went, went to school there, I guess, and, and it's just an absolutely wonderful community room. And so we, we made a very nice space. Our operations folks are together now for the first time, and they're communicating like we want them to do, and we did it at a reasonable price, and in terms of what we spent to make that happen. And so the, the last piece that we wanted to do was to, to move our bus garage to that property, and actually renovate the gym to make it a, into a bus garage. And, you know, we actually moved originally, we've already moved there our transportation offices. Our offices that were with the transportation department were at the garage, and, and we had found there, there was actually carbon monoxide getting into the offices, and so not really a safe, safe environment for our folks. And so we moved that and actually converted a, a locker room into a, into a nice office space for them. And so we want to move the buses there as well, and some reasons why, the current bus facility is very insufficient. We, it's, it was, the last, we, we bought it in nineteen sixty-five, the building was there then, so it, the building's been there for many, many years. And it's not enough space, it's not enough, you know, basically, the fresh air's hard to get in and out of there, we cannot put our buses on the lifts, or our mechanics on the backs, most of the time when they're actually working on these buses, so that's a, that's a huge, huge problem. And so we started looking, we looked at the gym at the old high school, we called it our operations center, and thought that would be a perfect place for it, because, you know, basically it had the space, it had the ceiling height that we needed. And, but that wasn't our first thought, okay? Our first thought, well, let's build a new garage. And, you know, not knowing how much that costs, we looked into it, and we're looking at about six million dollars for a new bus garage. And six million dollars is a lot of money for us, it's a lot of money for everyone, you know, to, to build. And we're trying to put our money into our schools. And so that's when we looked at the renovating of the bus garage. And of course, when we, when we thought of it, we didn't think of being any issues with it, because it's been a school since nineteen thirty-five, and it's had buses there, ever since buses were allowed to run in the county. And we've had, we have buses there every day, we parked buses there, up until this year, actually, we had buses there every summer that were stored there. We had buses out front last year that we actually, the oldest buses we had, and they were actually sold, some of our old buses. And so we've always had buses there, and, you know, we want to convert that into a, a bus garage. It would cost us under a million dollars, which then would, of course, save us about five million. Of course, live, you know, the history of the county over the past few years, you know, back when the roof at Blacksburg High School collapsed, Auburn, and Auburn High and Auburn Middle were slated to get a new high school. And so, but then the roof collapsed, and there's questions, what's going to happen? And so Blacksburg High School ended up building a brand-new school. And what that did was, they also built the Auburn High School and renovated the old high school to make it an Auburn Middle School. So what that did, that put our county at its capacity in terms of debt all at once. And so it held off, you know, other projects for, for a few years, until we could actually save enough money to renovate following branch, if you haven't seen that, it's a beautiful, beautiful school now, what we've done there. And we've also developed enough capacity our county has, we, we're in the process of renovating Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary in Bellevue, we'll be breaking ground on those projects here in about four weeks, so we're excited about that. But the, you know, back when the new Blacksburg High School was built, the next project was going to be Christiansburg High School. Christiansburg High School is in great need of updating and repair. And so Christiansburg High School got moved, it got, you know, and it still hasn't been done, as you know. That project's going to be a very, very expensive project for our community. And our county only has so much borrowing capacity, and what our county is committed to do, to doing, is actually borrowing the most we possibly can, which will be hopefully in the next year, to actually renovate and update Christiansburg High School. And so what we would like is not to spend six million dollars on a garage, but spend a million dollars on a garage, and put that other five million dollars into Christiansburg High School. We think that's very important, we'd rather put our, you know, put that money into, into schools for our students, although our employees do need this garage area to work on our buses. So, you know, one thing also, it's still a school property, too. It actually, we have over fifty students there every day. Now we have about a hundred twenty-five employees there every day. If we move the garage there, we'll have close to two hundred employees there every day. They're shopping, they're seeing walking out the front door and going, getting lunch on Main Street, often. And so we sort of brought that property back to life, that was just sort of set still, besides that one building where our Montgomery Central School was. And our property's now become alive, and it's, it's a professional building. And, you know, something else we do there, too, that you need to know, we actually, we don't just have the schools, kids at Montgomery Central, we also have kids in the actual operations building, and we'll have them in the garage as well. We have students who are working in our warehouse, students who are custodians that work in that building, and in our current garage, we have students who are internship for diesel mechanic. You know, when they finish their max out at Christiansburg High School with the mechanic ASA license, we actually allow them to work with our diesel mechanics. And we've actually hired a former student to be a diesel mechanic for us through that project, so we'll have students in that building as well. And so we're very excited about this possibility, but, you know, also, we need to save this money, because we want to put it all in Christiansburg High School, right? Amazing upgrades to our athletic facilities on the outside, we want to do the same thing on the inside, for our students and classrooms and athletic facilities on the inside. So hopefully you folks will see it to allow us to use our school for buses. Of course, when I first started, I didn't think it would be a big issue to bring buses to a school. And, and so hopefully you all see the same, the same as we do there. So appreciate it, I know we have some other folks who want to talk to you as well. Yes, Ms. Hugh?
I just have just some comments here about, now I'm sure you people have already thought about this, but I know that, what, about ten years ago, the town of Christiansburg was about fourteen thousand, and right now we're around twenty-three, and I hear by two thousand twenty-eight, we're going to be about twenty-eight thousand. And I was just thinking, people need, contractors need property, because we're expanding so fast right now. And I'm thinking that Christiansburg Middle School property, it's of course right in the center of Christiansburg, probably our best property that we have, and I thought that, you know, I've seen what happened at Blacksburg Middle School, how they have turned that around, and I know you were mentioning that you can maybe save some money by consolidating, but I was just thinking, if that property was maintained in such a way, contractor would maybe be looking down there and saying, hey, we will give you X amount of money for this, you know, in, in the next couple of years.
Steve, what, what's your suggestion?
I'm getting there. And so I just was thinking here that, you know, sometimes it worries me a little bit that we're going to have a garage there, and we're going to have this and that, and I don't want it to look like a, in the middle of Christiansburg, like a, I eat my truck stop, and thinking that this is part of our prime land. And so what I'm trying to say is, what do you think about that, about just trying to maintain Christiansburg Middle School area, or maybe further development, and maybe do something else, maybe the Cambria area, upgrade that a little bit more? And I know you've thought about this a lot.
Yeah, and we've thought about that, you know, the Cambria is not sufficient site in terms of, you know, and then two, we have to build a new garage, and it's going to cost six million dollars, even put a Cambria site, okay? And so that, that is the number one thing that, that hinders us from making that happen. You know, of course, our property's not for sale, that would be up to the school board, if they ever want to sell that property, the old middle school property, I mean, it's, you know, of course, it's been our property for a long time, and we have, we have no plans of selling it. To actually move the, the departments that would be placed in that building, it would be a significant cost to, to actually build another building for them in this county. So I, you know, I.
But you understand my point, too, that this is a very good piece of land right here.
Sure.
It's a good location. It could be a completely redevelopment of downtown Christiansburg.
Right.
We could maybe put a conference center in there eventually.
Sure you could. But let me say this, let me say, you know, sure you could, all right? But at the end of the day, you know, for one, we need something now for our bus mechanics to, in a proper area to fix their garage, I mean, fix their buses in a proper garage. You know, if down the road, someone comes and offers us a significant amount of money to sell that property to them, that will allow us to go somewhere different, then we would be open to listening to anyone, obviously, and it would be a school board decision at the end of the day. But at this point, you know, we, we have no other options, and we want to, we want to have our money in the bank for, for Christiansburg High School, when we start my project in about two years. So I understand your point, but we're in a tough situation.
I went to your facilities, I don't think no one here, or I'm talking about myself and a lot of the people I have spoken with, we don't have an issue with the buildings, we love the buildings. I am glad that you guys are fixing them. I'm very excited to know that you guys have been able to remodel a large portion of them. I'm glad that you have employees downtown. I'm glad that you are actually taking care of a lot of the necessities for us parents with our kids. And I'm so grateful that we have a school board like you guys to help us teach our children. So for that, I'm grateful. I think the thing that is a concern to me, and just like it sounds to be for Mr. Hopper, is the school buses downtown. I understand you used to have buses in the past, about several years ago, when you had the Blacksburg schools here.
Yeah, buses there.
That was a need. Yeah, I know, but I'm talking about Blacksburg schools when they were full capacity. It was a necessity. Nobody in here will say, please don't bring those buses. During this time, you have been able to have those buses there. You have not had all the buses there. You have not brought all the Cambria buses downtown, from my understanding. When I go to the site, your bus site on Cambria Street, I see wire fences falling apart, I see weeds growing everywhere, trees growing into the fences, I see facilities that are falling apart, I see trees and more. Yeah, I know, but I'm talking about Blacksburg schools when they were full capacity. It was a necessity. Nobody here will say, please don't bring those buses. During this time, you have been able to have those buses there. You have not had all the buses there. You have not brought all the Cambria buses downtown, from my understanding. When I go to the site, your bus site on Cambria Street, I see wire fences falling apart. I see weeds growing everywhere, trees growing into the fences. I see facilities that are falling apart. I see trees and more weeds. I understand that you have tough decisions all the time. I understand that you would like us to say yes. And I am grateful that you're willing to spend money in our town, which we also pay money into the Montgomery County School. We're grateful you're doing the things that you're supposed to do with our kids. And I know you have very tough decisions coming up with COVID, I think. For that, I, like I said to you, I'm not against you. But as far as the bus stop rezoning that piece of land, I think you're not, not only going to bring an ice door to downtown, you're also going to bring probably issues with even out of storm water. Can you provide us with information saying that our water for those creeks that go down to downtown are going to have clean water? Because from my understanding, when you use cleaners or when you wash down buses, you're going to have oil coming out of them. How are you going to maintain that? Is that water going to be 100% pure going down there? We invested a lot of money on Depot Park. That Depot Park looks amazingly beautiful. And I'm grateful that the town of Christiansburg is spending so much money in our downtown. But I also would like to see if we can come in an agreement with everybody. I'm speaking for myself, obviously. But all I'm saying is, we have a vision for downtown to look a very prosperous downtown, to have stores downtown, to have residential downtown. And this does not fit with the plan, some of the plans that we had had in the past. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, and so in response to that, first, the picture you took of Cambria, you know, we knew a couple of years ago that we were not, you know, if we were to stay there, we would have new fencing in, we would take care of the landscaping, we would have repaved the area, but there's no reason putting money into that property. This property, we presented it, planned it, the planning commission, it shows we're going to put appropriate shrubbery around the entire place, we're going to keep it up, we're going to make it look nice. I know it's, I know it's important to you, it's important to us that we have facilities that are maintained. You know, going to, you know, and then too, you talk about, you know, having, having buses in the middle of downtown, you know, one thing I would, I would, you know, bring to your attention, if you go right across the street to Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary School, it's really still middle downtown, it's right across the street. It is zoned appropriately, we could build a bus garage there right now and still be in the middle of downtown. And so, I mean, basically, I think we're sort of a victim of old zoning is what's been happening in that, in that area. That zoning probably should have been changed, changed a long time ago. We're not an industrial garage. We maintain buses with about five mechanics and who deserve a nice place. And of course, our number one priority are our students. And, you know, Christiansburg High School is important to us in that, in that project because we want it to be granted, we wanted to do some things for this town. We have a great partnership with this town, as y'all know. Our schools have had a great partnership for a long time. And, you know, one thing that we've already done is this, we've upgraded those athletic facilities and it's already bringing money to y'all's town and we're glad for that partnership. We, and we're actually vying for a state championship meet at Christiansburg High School next year. And if we get that, we bring thousands of dollars. Why? Because we invest in that property and into that Christiansburg High School, put an eight lane track in there. And so we, we're, you know, we have a great partnership and great history between us and you and this town.
Can you address the concern about the oil and the stuff? I mean, let's cut to chase, we, we do have a great relationship.
Yeah.
But the selling point to you all is how are you going to keep this, keep the water out of the system with oil on the system?
We actually have own staff and environmental specialists. That's their job to make sure that does not happen. And we will follow all guidelines as is given to us, you know, by the governments who have requirements upon us, that that will, we're not going to make things unsafe for our community. You know, this is our, these are, this is our students' community too, you know, and I definitely don't want unsafe drinking water. We'll make sure that we follow all guidelines as outlined by the government. Does that right?
Yes, sir. We are completely compliant with both federal, state, and local regulations.
Right. So I don't see that being an issue. Yes, sir.
I don't mean to be hostile, but I had heard before this meeting that you were maybe, maybe this would come down the line in some way, that you were going to provide maybe screening if this was granted on that property, so maybe it would upgrade the appearance a little bit. Is that true?
Absolutely. The, it would be a nice light chain link fence with the screening covering the entire fencing. Then it will be, there will be trees planted around the outside of that, the entire property. And actually, it's going to make it look better than it does now because we have an old chain link fence that's rusted out there and we want to make that property look, look real nice.
So if you're driving down Main Street or College Street and you look back up toward the school, that view's not changing whatsoever?
No, in fact.
It's probably going to get better.
In fact, it's getting better. Let me tell you why. We're, if you go by there right now, you'll see four new windows that have been installed in the front and they were test windows. Starting beginning of September, we're actually taking all the windows out of front of that school and putting brand new windows in that school. And it actually looks beautiful. So it's actually, we're going to improve the face of that building. And we're not doing anything in front.
And you're going to keep the old, the old elementary, the whatever, the one level brick building down the school, we alter that school?
Yeah, Montgomery Central will still be there. And of course, that's another issue when you talk about us, you know, giving up that property. We have nowhere for that school to go. We have about 50 kids, like I said, go there every day and to get their education. And we have several teachers that are there, we have a principal that's there and we have buses to go there every day already and drop kids off and pick them up.
Thank you. Now, you have the field, lower field down there that's used for kids for lacrosse and soccer, is that still going to be available?
The lower field will be available. That's correct. The upper field will not. What we, what we've done is this, when we installed a turf field at Christiansburg High School, it created a multi-use field. Prior to, prior to having a turf field and just being a grass field, you do not practice on grass fields. Because if you did, you would not have a, you'd be playing in mud on Friday, Friday night football. And so we couldn't practice on that field, but now putting that turf down, it actually allows for a practice field as well. And so we're not in need of the field as much as upper field. But that lower field will still be available for every needs.
I mean, these are usually middle school kids, 10-year-olds. You know the field I'm talking about?
Yeah.
It's still allowed to practice there.
Yeah, that's still intact.
Still viable, okay.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what's the amount of money that you will have available to maintain the facility once everything is done?
The amount of money to maintain?
Because the last sum, from my understanding, was 29 cents, correct?
I'm not sure the exact amount of that.
That's the amount that we got, that's not even enough to continue to take care of that. So later on, we may end up with downtown like Cambria Street.
Not on my watch.
Mr. K, do you have a comment on that?
Well, in that, in response to that, if we vacate Cambria, those dollars then are available to be used on other assets. So in consolidation, as Dr. Meyer said, creates efficiencies that also frees up dollars within side of general purpose budget that can be used to maintain existing facilities. Without that, the only thing we have then is to find new revenue sources. And honestly, those revenue sources aren't available. So bringing everything into one site, consolidating it, creates a greater efficiency from an operating standpoint, but it does create additional dollar opportunities that we wouldn't see when we're separated.
And I can't guarantee any, any future monies for schools. I mean, as you know, it, it goes up and comes back down based on the economy and based on tax revenue. So there's, there's no guarantees of maintaining anything. But we will definitely do what we can within the finances that we actually have. But of course, we got to spend five million dollars, it takes away from any maintenance that we could do anywhere.
Now, if we approve this next week, do you know when would you try to install this call?
That's a question. That's a real good question because what's, what's happened is we're hoping in the fall, but right now we're, we're holding back some capital money because of the COVID situation and because we may need those resources that we thought we could put into that for COVID for our schools. I will be making a recommendation to the school board that we sell the property on Cambria. And so that, that would be additional revenue. That is, at the end of the day, we would like to take that revenue to move forward. So hopefully the fall, but we need, because we need to do something for our mechanics real soon.
Thank you.
So you are very close to College Street, to some of the people over here seem to be, they had problems with storm water problems just recently, flood issues.
On College Street, out the residential area?
Yes, that's up the street, which to me, that will even be a concern because if you're having more water and everything, does that mean that that's going to back up and come up the stream? I guess that just will be a concern to me. Just like I said to you, we don't have, I don't have a problem with the buildings. I, I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful that you're there and I'm grateful that you're fixing them. But I find it kind of sad and disappointing that you will say that you want to, that if we don't do this, you're wanting to take our money away and put it somewhere else.
No, no, no. I didn't say I was taking our money away and putting this somewhere else. The county only has a limited amount of money and to borrow. And we want them to borrow the max that they possibly can for Christiansburg High School. And so what will happen is, say the, say the amount is 100 million dollars, okay? We're going to borrow the max amount in about a year and a half. And if it's 100 million dollars, five of it's going to a new bus garage and 95 is going to Christiansburg High School, as opposed to the entire 100 going to Christiansburg High School. It is just a matter of facts and money, in terms of money of our county resources. And so it's, I'm not, I would have, I don't, I don't have a choice. We have, we have to do something.
Can you explain something to me about the money? Because the reality is the numbers are not adding up. You're talking about that is?
I'm sorry, this, this is a land use issue, has nothing to do with finances?
Yeah.
If I, if I announced that earlier, is that not correct?
This is a public hearing. I appreciate the questions. This is coming before council, before us in two weeks for a vote. I would encourage you to meet with Dr. Meyer in the meantime, to answer her questions or to fill those via email to him so he can answer all of us or at least we can see it. But I'm more interested to see who's here in the general public that's here to speak on this.
Yeah, and we, I know we have folks on our behalf, I'm sure others as well.
So I know that you have a group and certainly being cognizant of freedom of speech, I would like to have all of them speak. However, if a spokesperson can relay that, or if they all want to speak, then I will limit them to two minutes. So who do you want here to address it on the post?
There we go, with two minutes.
Yeah.
I'm sure. All of them have different perspectives, so we appreciate that.
Dr. Meyer, I appreciate your answer to my question.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Name, address, and serial number? No.
Jim Bond, 2263, Hall Road, Christiansburg, Virginia.
Can I, can I make one more point?
Sure.
Joanna, you're, you're actually on our planning commission, so this is coming before you within the next two weeks.
I'm usually coming in next month.
There, and I hope that you share Dr. Meyer's answers as well.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you. I come to you tonight wearing three hats. I'm a proud parent and community member, second, a downtown building and business owner, and thirdly, I represent what I feel to be an outstanding school division. I'm in support of what I remember as the old middle school. To be rezoned, allowing the bus garage to be added and take one step closer to being a fully functional operations building. Buses, students, faculty, vehicles, and sports have been a part of our community since 1935 at that location. Even the Black Sisters with an old girl's school before that. I personally can't imagine looking up on that hill and not seeing that part of our history. As a business owner, I want to thank the town of Christiansburg for the hard work you've done to make the town look so very nice, from the sidewalks to the flowers to the new signs and funding the grant program to help storefronts. I was one of those and it helped me do a lot of things that I couldn't have done without that. Although we may not have the shopping district, it once used to be downtown. I like seeing it as a professional district and possibly having approximately 125 people housed at that operations center that may support already established businesses. It's exciting to me as a business owner to think that. I would like to think that we all agree that our students are the future and anything that we can do to make their education stronger has to be positive. Thanks for hearing us tonight and I do want to make some comments about the downtown. I see lots of successful businesses that host equipment buses, I mean not buses, but vans and service vans and things like that. I look at that as they're doing something right, the more they have. And it may not be the ideal situation, but that's how someone's making a living. And we're not in it to be profitable, we're in it to educate children. And that's what the future is for us in downtown Christiansburg. And as far as having different event centers and things like that, we've got two or three on Main Street already.
Thank you.
And.
You got, you got 10 seconds.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I thought I would have more than two minutes. So I'm here as a school board member, lifelong resident of Montgomery County and Christiansburg. I thank you, Ms. Mayor, so much for making this what it is. This is a zoning issue. From the time I got on that school board in 2000, for over 15 years dealt with a zoning issue in Blacksburg. A zoning issue that would not allow funds to come back into the county to be able to support capital projects within this county for all students. This is what this is about also. This is a zoning issue that will allow us to move our employees to a safe facility, to have them be able to work on our buses the way they needed, need to be worked on. It will in no way take away from the appearance of downtown Christiansburg. Moving all of our operations into that building has made us more efficient and it bought life back to that building. Life came back when the students came to Blacksburg and now life is back in that building again to support the schools. Christiansburg has waited and waited and waited to have improvements to our schools here because of the economic situation, because of the collapse at Blacksburg. Christiansburg keeps getting pushed back. Now, everybody has a new high school except for Christiansburg because it is too expensive to do that. So we're being as frugal as we can with taxpayers' funds to build the school that Christiansburg students deserve. And if we have to build a new garage.
About 10 seconds.
It will be a tragedy to the citizens of Christiansburg and that's who we're here to support, the students. We cannot afford to take that money and put it into building a garage when it needs to go into that school.
14 minutes?
Hey, there y'all.
Good, you've got two minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm athletic director of Christiansburg High School and I'm just speaking to possible renovations to Christiansburg High School and the funding that might get cut. I've been involved with Christiansburg, I grew up in Christiansburg. I have been involved with Christiansburg Athletics for the last 19 years as a coach and athletic director. Our facilities were way, way behind. When Dr. Meyer and the school board got together four years ago, as everybody I'm sure is aware, our outdoor facilities got upgraded immensely beyond comprehension and, and we've done that on the outside, but we need to do it on the inside. The biggest concern that I have, if we get five million dollars cut, because of the extensive renovations that have to be done at Christiansburg High School, is that we would lose to getting a gym. I'm sorry if I didn't word that correctly. We are the only secondary school in the county and probably in the area that only has one gymnasium. We have 1,200 students, we have over 400 kids that are involved in athletics, which is one-third of our student population. We have 24 teams that we, 24 sports that we outfit, 38 teams that have to use our facilities. And when you've got one gym, as you can imagine from a scheduling standpoint, with practices, preseason practices, postseason practices, implement weather practices, it's very difficult for us to get everybody in the gym and get them the quality that, that we would need. And Dr. Meyer, of course, with the plan, I think if he upgraded our indoor facilities the way the outdoor facilities are, then it's going to have a tremendous impact with the entire town, including economically. We're going to host a lot of championship meets.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tony Diebler. I live at two forty Gibson Drive, and I'm also the principal at Christiansburg High School. Um, Christiansburg has well over one thousand students and will continue to grow, as someone mentioned earlier, uh, the growth in the, uh, town itself over the next few years. Um, we're already close to two hundred students over capacity. If you've ever tried to learn or teach at CHS, you are aware that many of the rooms are very small. Almost all rooms are less than the state's recommended guidelines in terms of square footage, and some are not much larger than an office. Additionally, many classrooms actually have walls which were built a year or two after CHS's original construction. And these walls are very thin, so much so that the students often work hard just to focus on the instruction in their own room while trying to ignore the instruction and activity going on in the room next door. We have five mobile classrooms behind the building. Many teachers do not have their own instructional space and are required to move multiple times during the day, which makes it very difficult for teachers to develop a personalized learning environment for instruction. CHS is currently slated to have an academic wing and gymnasium additions in the next, in the next few years. These facility upgrades are absolutely necessary to meet the educational needs of our students, the students from the town of Christiansburg. As it stands today, our faculty and staff and students work very hard to offset the competitive disadvantage our facility puts us in.
About ten seconds, Tim.
Having a modernized high school, one that is equipped to meet the twenty-first century education needs, will add to the value of living in and visiting Christiansburg, Virginia. I'd like to recommend that we not lose the five or six million dollars that are currently slated to Christiansburg High School to build a new garage. We need it.
Thank you.
Can Ms. Mayor lead? Because I have one question about the fine six million dollars that he's talking about.
Dr. Matthews. It's Mark. Are you looking at Dr. Meyer?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
You can talk to another lady, if you would please. We're in public comments. Ms. Mayor.
Hi, my name is Abby Bond, and I live at two-two-six-three Pilot Road, Christiansburg. And I would like to see the old Christiansburg Middle School be rezoned so the bus garage can be added to the operations center. My entire life, I've heard about how important it is for different groups to work together for a common goal under the same roof. If the operations center and the bus garage are together, then these groups can work together to make our schools stronger and better. Our school system helped me make, make who I am today. I wouldn't be where I am without them. If it wasn't for Christiansburg High School, I wouldn't have been able to graduate high school with my cosmetology license. I wouldn't have been able to graduate from New River Community College with an associate degree in business administration for free. I didn't pay a single thing. They already have so many amazing programs already for students. I can't imagine, or begin to imagine, what new opportunities they'll have for the future students when they're all working together under the same roof. So, please let these two groups work together so that we can help future students. Thank you.
My name is Jason Lawrence. I'm the fleet shop foreman for Montgomery County Schools Transportation Department. Um, just a little bit about what our guys are facing in the current facility. Uh, as Dr. Meyer stated, our, our ceiling height is so low, we can't lift the buses, so half of the work that we do are, are, of mechanics are on their backs, you know, working in, you know, on, on the floor, on creepers all the time. Uh, we service a lot of vehicles, you know, our fleet and our white fleet, all the mowers, everything we do is in the small shop, three bays on the big side. And with the amount of buses we have to work on, it's over nine hundred services a year. So, that's a lot of working on your back. Uh, Dr. Meyer's also stated about the carbon monoxide issue with the transportation office. The, uh, the building is, we'll say vintage. Right. So, it's been added onto multiple times, which creates an issue with crossflow of air, which is hard to get fresh air in and out of our building. So, I think that, you know, if we can get into the, the gymnasium, uh, College Street, I think would be a big benefit for the health and safety of all of the mechanics in the shop. Those guys, they work their hearts out, uh, on our fleet, and, uh, it's a shame for them to have to put in the hours that they do lying flat on their backs when we could have a place, we could lift the buses up and actually get up under them and do the job like it should be done. Please consider the rezoning. I think it would be a really big benefit for the school system, and I think it'd be a big benefit for the town as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Forward, against, independently?
I think we have two more.
How many?
I think we have two more speakers.
Okay.
Hi there. My name is Warren Rossborough, and I live, uh, next to the facility under question at one oh seven College Street. And, uh, I, I guess I'm a concerned citizen. I'm not concerned about the public schools, not concerned about funding for the public schools, I'm not concerned about, um, whether the buses get fixed. I hope they do. My concern is about, um, if I understand the issue correctly, whether we want to use a sixteen-acre downtown property as a bus garage. And I've seen the drawings and, you know, they look nice. Architects draw nice pictures, and I'm sure the property, when it's initially done, will look great. Um, you know, but I live within yards of the gymnasium that's gonna be a, a bus shop. And, um, my family just moved to Christiansburg from, uh, Blacksburg a few weeks ago, actually, into the property. And, uh, yeah, I mean, I didn't figure that I'd have to worry about living within yards of a, a diesel bus shop. The smells are bad. I mean, the way to get ventilation from the gym is to send the, uh, the air outside, and so that's within yards of my house and the houses of several other people. The sounds are not, uh, what you would call conducive to a vibrant downtown Christiansburg. I mean, that is really the issue, is whether this particular property is appropriate for use as a bus repair shop, i- i- and is that conducive to a, a vibrant downtown Christiansburg? No, and this is not a concern against the schools, against educating children, against funding for any of that. And I know there's practical concerns about where do we put the buses, and we need space to do that. Uh, and I appreciate the efforts that are being made there. Um, but I don't think the downtown property is the place to do it. And yeah, it's a, you know, I live next door, right? So, uh, I may have concerns that others don't. But I really feel like there's a zoning issue. This doesn't really fit into, um, what Christiansburg is looking to become. I love the fact that there are people working there in offices. I love the fact that there, it's a big employer bringing people downtown. Downtown needs that. But I believe it needs a bus repair shop.
You've got ten seconds.
Uh, ten seconds. I'll have to say.
Hi, I'm Liz Dixon, and, um, I also grew up in Christiansburg. I graduated from Christiansburg, and I, I love Christiansburg. Um, the, the biggest reason for my, my feeling like I need to share tonight is because we bought a property downtown Christiansburg. We bought the big white house behind the jail. And why did we buy that house? We bought that house because we hated seeing the downtown fall down. That is the God's honest truth. You know, we could have bought any other property in Christiansburg. This makes our fifth house that we've done, we usually target the older houses because most people don't have a big interest in that. And, you know, when I heard that that's what the plans to do, the bus garage, I too, like the, the gentleman that lives right beside of it, it saddened me because I don't feel like it will, it's not what investors are gonna want. And, you know, we, we're looking at the now. We're looking at what we've got right now in front of us. But I'm like, I heard what you said, years down the road, you know, this, it's growing and growing and growing. So, I feel like we need to think about that. We need to think about our town. And, you know, we need to think about what we, what can we do that would make it conducive for other businesses to want to come downtown? Because I feel like if we go in this direction, then who is gonna want to invest in the downtown? And that's what I feel like it is. It's an investment. We put, you know, anybody that knows anything about renovation, we put a lot of money in the houses that we renovate. Well, I believe Christiansburg is worth the investment. I believe the downtown is worth the investment. And I really hope that you'll think about this. I, you know, a lot of those people that are sitting in that room, I'm friends with. I went to school with. I'm not trying to come against the school board and what they want because I believe in education. I graduated from the high school. I'm now a registered nurse. And, um, so it's not anything about coming against the, their plan. It's the ba, more about what is it going to do to our downtown?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to address this issue? Hearing no one, I will close this section of the public hearing. We will move on to conditional use permit request contingent upon the preceding item by Montgomery County School Board applicant owner for a commercial garage, maintenance shop, and contractor storage yard on the property located at twenty-two oh eight College Street, northwest, northwest. Tax map five twenty-six dash eight dash one seventy-five in the B three general business district. The property is designated as downtown mixed use and a future use, future land use map town of Christiansburg. Anyone to address this issue? Hearing no one, close that part of the public hearing. Uh, we will go on to the next caller, Dr. Meyer. I think Ms. Hicks may have had a question that you may want to let her email you on or, how long's the question, Ms. Hicks? I mean, is something we can ask him right now?
For-
You said about a year and a month.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Uh, you said that, um, you're talking about six million, you're gonna spend, is it, do you say you want to spend a hundred million dollars in the high school? I'm very excited about-
I gave you a hypothetical number to help it make sense.
I was very excited about that. Thank you so much. We're looking forward to it.
Let me tell you what a high school does real quick, just one comment, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let it go. You want property values to go up? You build a nice high school. I'm telling you, it makes property values go up.
He did that for Blacksburg really well.
Yes. And we like to do it for Christiansburg as well. So, thank you all.
We're excited about that. But I have a question about the, the six million dollars. You said that, so right now, the problem is, I have been at your facility, and I'm so grateful that you guys were able to show me, or not you, but the people that work for you. Uh, I, I appreciate their service, and they have done a great job as well. Um, the building, like I said, you were excited about the people working in there, but the gymnasium, the gymnasium is the one that I have an issue because you said that, is that where you want to spend six million dollars in the gymnasium?
No, absolutely not. We would have to build, we would have to build a brand-new facility somewhere else to, to, uh, it would cost under a million dollars to actually convert that from a gymnasium to a garage.
Under a million dollars? So, why is the, the question of a six million dollars? Because you guys are, uh, apprised that you're selling the Cambridge, uh, location for a million, so you should be.
I, I didn't say anything about selling Cambridge for a million. I have no idea how much a property worth, to be quite honest with you.
Oh, I thought the last person on the planning meeting had said one point, two million.
We don't know how much we would give that property.
Okay, well, so anyway, I just figured the six million dollars, so from where are you coming out with the six million dollars? Because-
It costs six million dollars to build a, um, new garage. It would, so at the end of the day, it would cost us about a million dollars to renovate what we have, so I keep, I'm the one, I keep saying five million. So, I take the six million for a new garage, okay? And so, um, you know, basically, it's, it's gonna end up, it's gonna be about five million.
Isn't that one building?
Hi.
Because, I mean, it's just the gymnasium. Everything else is, is used right now as an option.
Right, so I'm thinking a million dollars is gonna take to actually make the current gymnasium into a garage. It's six, it's costing six for a new.
Okay, that really does have nothing to do with the zoning and land use, but I think the economics is there. You can spend six million on a new building somewhere else, or you can spend a million and put five more million back into the improvement of the school system.
Yes, sir.
Whether it be Christiansburg High School, Christiansburg High School, Christiansburg Elementary School, that's what, that's the theoretic side.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer.
Thank you.
We have a rezoning request for Golden Triangle LLC for an approximately two-acre property located north of Blade Drive Southeast and south of Interstate eighty-one adjacent to the Regan's Point subdivision, tax map number five-three-oh-dash-two-dash-eight-seven-C. The request is to rezone the property from the A agriculture district to the R three multifamily residential district. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map in the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this odd, this issue?
Good evening to mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Bryant Altizer. I'm with Gayden Neal, we're the engineers representing the, uh, developers and owners of the property. Uh, John Neal has been, uh, behind the scenes working on this since, uh, the beginning. I've sort of came in on the last, uh, year of this project. Uh, he sent a very thorough summary of the project, uh, at the end of last week directly to you, so, uh, instead of going through all of the information on there, I would just like to, to see if there's any questions for me.
So, I believe if I understand correctly that you're using some land that VDOT owned at one time that was for stormwater management, and you've been able to move that stormwater management elsewhere and recover that four acres of land?
Yeah, that was correct. During the original rezoning, there was some, uh, an effort made with the developer to work with VDOT to purchase that property and/or build the stormwater management facility that was earmarked for that property, uh, just based on red tape. That didn't happen quick enough, so the developer had to go ahead and use his own property to build the stormwater management. And then after it was under construction, VDOT, uh, came back and said, yes, we're willing to, uh, sell the property, so now we're looking at actually going to one of the two plans that was presented with the original rezoning. So, if you look at the overall plan, it, it seems to fit much better with the area. It'll actually provide a regional stormwater management facility for the town of Christiansburg, uh, with the Interstate eighty-one interchange and property across the interstate. Uh, so it'll be a regional facility instead of just a stormwater management facility for the, uh, just for the subdivision.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone else here to address this issue?
Thank you.
I'll close that section of the public hearing. Conditional use permit request contingent on the preceding item by Golden Triangle Development to amend planned housing development for the Regan's Point subdivision. Uh, it hadn't moved from what it was in the last public hearing. Uh, the planned housing development to modify the approved development plan regulations in order to add nine additional single-family units within the development of an approximate density of development of four-point-four units per acre. And to configure the open space and stormwater management facility, portioned affected property includes tax map five-three-oh-dash-two-dash-eight-seven-C, five-three-oh-dash-one-eight-dash-A-dash-E, five-three-oh-dash-one-eight-dash-three-four, and five-three-oh-dash-one-eight-dash-four-six in the R three multifamily residential district, uh, property designated as residential in future land use map of the town of Christiansburg. Is there anyone here to address this item? Hearing no one, close the public hearings. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes twenty-three, uh, June twenty-three meeting, smart scale project resolution of support of Pepper's Ferry Road and Cambridge Street Connector Route, smart scale project resolution to, of support for North Franklin Street, Elm to Depot lighting and pedestrian improvements, smart scale project resolution of support for North Franklin Street, Depot Street intersection improvements, and schedule a public hearing for July the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty for a street variation, or vacation request by Gayden Neal Incorporated for an ordinance to vacate South, I'm sorry, Scattergood Drive Northwest, right-of-way approximately one-point-three acres from the western terminus of Diamond Hills Park and along the full portion of the right-of-way adjoining the property located at six-eighty, six-ninety, and seven-hundred Scattergood Drive, uh, tax map number forty-nine, uh- Tax map number forty-nine, uh, four ninety-five dash one dash one C.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A, D, and E.
One second. A, B, and E. Any further discussion on those three items?
I would like to hold off on B. In addition to your, what you, you mentioned C and D. Do you want to move?
Uh, well, we'll vote on that separate because Joanna's going to have to either say in the vote.
Okay, so we're doing A, E?
A, B, and E.
A, B, and E. It's approved and the consent.
And I'll, and I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
This is five, uh, smart scale resolution. I will say that the...
Now, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agendas C and D.
Okay. C and D.
Can I have a question? Can I ask a question really quick?
Let's get the motion in a second and then we'll, we can answer any questions as I...
Well, I would like to have this answered first before I abstain my informed opinion. This is a state project.
We can put it on the table and then if we have to amend it.
Okay.
Do it.
Why, you got a question?
Sorry, ma'am.
That's all right.
Steve's second.
Now, C, we're doing C and D?
Yeah, and now it's on the table. So Joanna, please.
Any discussion?
Yes. The smart scale project, that's not a town project, but a state project, correct?
It would be a town project funded by VDOT. It's basically a competitive application process through the state. The town puts in the application. To give you an example, the North Franklin Street, Cambria Street project. That's a smart scale project that the town is administering, but VDOT is funding.
Oh, okay. And for how long have you had that in the, on the plans of this, just for a period?
We've really had these plans, really, I guess, for decades for, for street projects. In the comprehensive plan, you know, these have been identified really for quite a while. We have other projects too that we're pursuing. We're just kind of basically trying to prioritize the street projects for applications.
Thank you.
I'll say, okay, anything else? I would say that on the smart scale resolution for Pepper's Ferry Road and Cambria that we approved, there were eight comments that were made about this project that we received in your town email. You should have those comments. So, one of the gentleman wanted to speak, and I blew by that one.
During, during citizen comments.
Under what? Under citizens comments?
Great, when we get to citizens comments.
Okay, very good. So, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
I'll say.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Very good. That is four oh one extension. For introductions and presentations, we have Director of Engineering Wayne Nelson to present on College Street Drainage.
Good evening, mayor, town council.
Get a little closer to that mic, Wayne.
Pardon me?
Get a little closer to the mic or get it up above or something before we can hear you.
How's that? Better?
What you're talking on, too.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be back here in front of you this evening. Randy's asked me to present to you to address the recent College Street flooding. I'll speak to the development of, and then the history of this College Street area. And how we have addressed similar flooding issues in other areas of town. I'll also speak to two of the immediate action items Randy provided to council. Moving water is a powerful force. I'm controlled. It can be very damaging. Two areas of town that had similar flooding issues are Hans Meadow and the western part of Cambria. Hans Meadow Drive. You want to, Andrew, do you want to shut these lights off so we can see that? There we go. Thank you very much. I don't know that we, I'm sorry to interrupt here. I don't know that this is the presentation.
The Ministry's at the mercy. I thought it had street names on it.
I'm sorry.
Is it in the council presentations?
It should be, yes. If, if not, I can, I can wing it.
You look well dressed up tonight.
Thank you. It was, it was nice to, after the last six months, get out of sweats and jeans.
I could not recognize you over there.
Maybe just open up the registry's at the bottom.
There we go. Okay. This is Hans Meadow. And this area was built in the eighties. Had a very shallow roadside ditch. There's offsite over here. Offsite runoff that, that flooded this street. I learned this early on in my tenure with the town. It's twenty years ago at least that I witnessed the flooding of this street and, and how these, these residents could not make access, get access to their homes because of the flooded street. We just recently completed a drainage system here, installed it. And now that offsite water passes through Hans Meadow and does not impact the owners, property owners, the way it did. The western side of Cambria is another area. This is a residential area similar to College Street that, that developed years ago and does not have a central stormwater conveyance system. Back in two thousand and seventeen, we completed a two-phase drainage project that installed a storm drain system that started at Crab Creek down by Luca Street. Came up Brown, came up Church, cut across Rigby, and up to Cambria, up Ellet, and to King Street. That's about just over three thousand feet of pipe we installed and relieved some significant flooding. And these are two pictures from a video that the news ran back in the day when the issue was present. That's not anything you want to experience right there. I want to bring up the downtown drainage study. That's been mentioned the last month or so. And I just want to clarify something that, that this study was intended for downtown. The downtown drainage system. And as you can see, the study area was, is quite large. Crosses the interstate to the south. We've got, it peaks right here, High Point at what was Dr. Danner's office on Roanoke Street. And then it follows along High Street here in Cambria. So it's a fairly significant drainage area. And we did it to, to look at and address flooding in downtown. So the focus was on the downtown drainage system. The study stopped at Radford Street. And that point is right here. That's right there. Excuse me. The College Street area hydrology was considered to size the downstream systems. You've got to start on the upper end. And engineers are proficient at this. They, they studied it and were able to project the stormwater that comes from the College Street area. However, improvements or drainage solutions to the problems in the College Street area was not part of the downtown study. I just wanted that to be clear. I want to point out here that this point right here, for your benefit, it's, it's right here. That is, that's the point on Depot where the drainage from the College Street area passes under Depot. And I point that out because this is the, this is that same point right here. And this is the College Street drainage basin, sub-basin. It's right about two hundred acres of drainage. And I want to use this slide because it, it tells a little bit of a story. This is the town corporate limits in nineteen forty-one. And this silver, excuse me, this gold line is the corporate limits established in nineteen sixty-six. The homes, the properties in red here were developed prior to nineteen sixty-six when all this land came into town. Areas in blue were after nineteen sixty-six. So it tells a bit of a story how, how this area developed after nineteen sixty-six. However, the central conveyance system wasn't there. That's not criticism of VDOT. That's just how things were back then. As I like to say, they were designed with, to conform with the regulations in effect at the time. So, blow up of that area. Here we have College Street, Buffalo, and Moose. Here's West Main. Here are the homes that are currently being impacted today in the College Street basin. There, there's two culverts that cross West Main. One here at Hickory. I know it well because I used to live right here on the corner. And there's a, a pipe crossing, culvert crossing just west of Robin Road. And that, aside from a little bit of storm drain right here that was built, that has been unchanged for all these years. That's not, that's just to, to not be critical, but just to kind of let everyone know what we're dealing with here. So after that, water crosses under West Main, it flows overland till it gets all the way down here to lower end of College Street where it crosses under the few parking lots. You know, there have, there has been development over the years. You know, the, the middle school was built. This, this blue area is their stormwater management basin. It discharges to, to Buffalo Drive here. And there's a stormwater pipe system, conveyance system on the north side of College Street. There's no drainage system on, on the south side of the street. The water, the drainage flows behind the homes. So, so this basin, when it discharges, it discharges to the system. There is a stormwater pond up here, wind song. It flows and once it crosses Hill Street, or Hillcrest, excuse me, then it flows overland till it gets to College Street. You know, this, there, there are situations that exist that, that we now, in engineering, that, that we, we don't allow. We ask the developers to pipe the stormwater through the lots. You know, when I first came to, to work here, it was pretty much, we didn't require curb and gutter. You put in culverts and then there are ditches between the homes. Nobody wants to see open water running, running between their homes. There's, there's properties that's developed here. They, they had to develop under CUP, conditional use permit. And they were required to over detain their stormwater because we knew we had, we had issues in this area. So that kind of gives you an overview of, of what we're dealing with here. How we came to be and, and, and how there's, there may be room for improvement here. I want to talk about some of the backyard conditions. This is the only photograph you're going to see of, of anyone's backyard. I asked the permission of, of the wood rooms if I could use this picture because it, it really speaks volumes. It speaks volumes in regards to the, the issue itself, but also the challenges we face here. You know, in the backyards, fences have been, fences have, have been installed, storage sheds set in place. There's play equipment. And residents have exercised their personal right to, for the enjoyment of their, and use of their property. I would like to point out that fences do not require permits in town. Storage sheds over two hundred fifty-six square feet require a building permit. But under that, it's a zoning permit. Shed smullen that zoning permit through the planning department. So then we had the May twenty-fourth event. I remember it well. That rain event was focused on the southwest side of town. It was a, it was a, it was a gully washer by any stretch. Combination of the water volume with the instruct, obstructions caused inundation in specific areas along College Street properties. This is the outline of potential action that council's been provided by, by Randy. I highlighted two, excuse me, two items that, that I'd like to address that, that I think ring bang for the buck. The first is, and I say that in regard to the immediate actions that Randy indicated that, that we can provide. Planning, engineering, and building inspection staff will identify and speak to property owners in drainage way in regards to fences and structures in the drainage way and ask for their cooperation removing obstacles to the flow of the water. You know, there are concerns. We, we want to communicate with the property owners by way of, by way of an introductory letter. And then we want to make site visits and, and speak to, speak to the property owners because I, as an engineer, want to hear what's going on, what you're seeing. I want to make sure down the road that we address those issues the very best way we can. And we want to investigate the homeowner opportunities to reduce the chance of flooding in, in their yards and in regards to their neighbors as well. The next action item is administration engineering staff will review project prioritization with town council in regards to stormwater capital projects and the timeframe for a long-term capital project in the College Street area. Will review stormwater projects with the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Stormwater Committee and set priorities this fall. In anticipation of that, town engineering and public works staff will compile a list of problems, stormwater areas, and work with the, with the committee to prioritize those projects. I want to note that project... I want to note that projects, the size and nature can potentially be funded through, through VDOT's revenue sharing program, and that I'm speaking to a project in the College Street drainage basin. So in that regard, a near-term action would be to expand, in support of that, would be to expand the downtown watershed study for College Street. We would secure engineering services to perform a preliminary engineering report. Identify existing drainage conveyance systems, existing stormwater management basins. Can basins, existing basins be retrofitted to store additional stormwater? Identify any potential areas for a regional basin to control stormwater that the town may build, and then identify proposed stormwater management bases, basins. In fact, I, we have met in the last month with a developer in this basin who will also need, if he proceeds as he is planning, to build a residential in a business district. He will need to comply with a conditional use permit, and I can guarantee that the town will require that there'll be over detention required from that property. But, you know, in support of this particular developer, we, after this event, we express interest in would they be willing to partner with us to increase the size of their basin and maybe pull back additional waters that otherwise would, under regulations, be allowed to run free. And to that end, this developer has expressed interest in working with us. So that is, pardon, excuse me, partner with developers to expand proposed basins. At the end of the day, we identify and analyze improvement options, the associated cost and the associated impact, and through this preliminary engineering report, that's our springboard into funding applications for a project. Again, that was just two of Randy's action items. I could speak for an hour, but I was asked to limit to 10 to 15 minutes. At that, at this point, I'll open it up for any questions from council.
I want to thank you for your time today.
You're welcome.
That was a nice presentation.
Well, I think it's not, from what we understand, it's not an immediate fix in the near future.
There's certain things we can do. I'd like to be able to say we're on a speedboat and we can take a, take a 90-degree turn, but it's more like a tugboat.
Yeah, I understand that. But I think that that particular area has had issues. I'm not sure if seriousness has passed issues, but they have had issues for years at times during the rainy season. So I think that we need, this is one of the areas that we need to, I know it's a relatively small residential area, but, I mean, it's, it is traumatic to have them go through this every two or three years or every year. I can't remember the last time, but it's been, it's happened before, maybe to a different set of owners than we have out there now, but they've had, there's been water in those basements for many years. And we are, we are suffering from the sins of our fathers, our forefathers, who felt that certain things weren't needed and maybe didn't have the vision to see the growth that we have now. I hope that we're going to work on that quite a bit.
I guess my question will be, what are we going to do to help them? Because from what I'm hearing here, it is that all we're going to do is send planning people and engineers and everything to look at this stuff, but we're not really providing fixes besides hopefully get some funding later on, which I find it kind of, kind of crazy to think about this way when, in reality, there's a lot of the water that came, that flooded their backyards, came from sanitary sewer lines and waterline systems as well, not just the runoff water from the floods. So...
Yes, the closed conduit system on the, on the north side of College Street, it too was inundated. It couldn't take anymore, and there was sheet flow across College Street. That too contributed to the issue behind the homes, yes, ma'am.
I guess this goes along with a conversation we just had this week when you guys had the conversations about Hickok Street. I had never seen Hickok Street being flooded. And then we are doing some work over there, and then we invested over $1.3 million over there at the marketplace, which I keep bringing it out because it wasn't just for a traffic light and an entrance, but it was also money for a stormwater pond that we helped facilitate for that facility, when at the same time, these people are coming over here in front of us today that are having these issues with their inundated backyards, have been paying taxes for years, and their families have been paying taxes for years. So I guess where my question will be, can we move them up the line to get some help for them to alleviate some of these issues? Because it's not just fences.
And that's what we'll be reviewing and addressing with the, with the committee.
So Wayne, you mentioned in your fixes, and it was pretty, it was a great presentation. I'm glad you came and did it, but the immediate fix, the immediate fix other than the items that, action items that Randy sent out to us. But you are going to meet with residents on College Street to address any fencing issues that are blocking water, you know, good, you know, positive measures for stormwater, but of course, it's their decision whether or not they want to implement those, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but we are going to meet with them.
Yes.
And then part of your, the other part of your remedy is to identify potential flood hazards, not only on College Street, but throughout the town, and then present those this fall to the stormwater committee, or a recommendation to then come to council. And then also we'll get your projects. Am I correct in what I'm saying?
You are very correct, sir.
So there are measures being taken.
Yes. I would like to mention the Hickok Street drainage project because that's important because this drainage basin ties right into that project. So that's, that's very important that we, that project in itself addresses flooding downtown under businesses, as, as did the North Franklin Street drainage project we just completed. So I think we've made some, some headway. Jim Lanson, Jim Lanson is public works director now. We were talking a couple of weeks ago, and we both agreed, you know, give us both enough time and money, we can fix all the problems. Unfortunately, we both are limited sometimes, but we can put our heads together and come up with a good program.
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure that we are, are working for the people in the same way that we're working for some members of the community, we're working the same way for other members of the community. Just because they don't happen to have a business downtown, that doesn't mean that they are less important to us.
I don't think the town's in a position, Joanna, to pick winners and losers, and we have to have expectations that there will be multi-projects going on throughout town at the same time. We can't say, well, we're not going to do a few because we should do it over there. And our, my expectations of our staff and our engineering staff is to look at the town as a whole like they're going to do now, but going throughout town for hotspots, and hopefully start to address all of them, or at least have a plan together. Now, we can't all, can't do them at once, as Wayne said. If we want to borrow millions and millions of dollars and do them at one time, but that's unrealistic at this point. I also want to make a point that the $1.3 million out of the marketplace was not for the stormwater pond that's out there. Randy, how much, how much did we invest in that? I mean, this has been mentioned multiple times.
It was, the stormwater was a small portion of the, I guess, agreement, also sidewalks, the small portion of the agreement, although the majority of it really was kind of geared towards the relocation of the...
The stormwater ponds, right? They just had to be...
It was, but they did make it a little bit larger to make it a little more of a, I guess, a...
Sort of leading the subject, but the stormwater pond was also put in there when the marketplace first was open, then more development occurred outside of that, which now the pond, and Walt Rector even pointed out to us, it now surfaces all these surrounding loads, the lobby lobby, the outback, the bank. It services the, I'm going to say, region at this point right now. And so, but they were paying for it. So I think it was, it's more of a regional, when we took it over, we understood that this is, it's not just one lot, but it serves the whole region, that stormwater pond, which existed. We just took it over and are going to maintain it, which I think will help the area.
But it sounds like Lowe's is on the other side, Mr. Shaw.
But it all drains down to that stormwater.
Does it?
Yes, I think that's basically the case, and the pond was at least to some degree taking water from the greater area anyhow previously.
Was there having issues before?
No, the pond hasn't really had any issues.
So I never had issues?
It seems to function appropriately.
Well, which goes to my question again, which they are having issues.
Right, but you brought in the marketplace, and it should be reasonable that the town have multiple projects going on around town. Now, it doesn't take away what happened to College Street, but you did bring that into the conversation, the marketplace. So I was explaining that it, you know, that the town does have multiple projects going on, and I appreciate the town is going to look into fixes in hotspots around the town, but College Street would be one of those, and you did point out that options will be brought in the fall to us.
Yes, sir.
You know, going back to College Street, Wayne, you probably got this letter from Mr. Woodroom too.
I did.
With their pictures and all that, and then the manhole, and you're hoping with the things that you're going to be doing, that stuff like manhole covers are not going to be, water not going to be flowing out like that in the future. And I thought maybe I would just give you this letter that she sent to me, just so, I'm sure you have a copy of it already, but just to make sure.
I do, and I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Wayne, as a follow-up, I would like you to get back to council after you've met with those homeowners on College Street and report back, you know, whether it brings some of the, some of the remedies that you recommended to them, and how the town is going to assist them in the immediate future.
Yes, sir.
Of course, with the subsequent meeting in the fall and making recommendations to council, hopefully with some answers.
Yes, sir. We're looking for that feedback, and we'll put on the thinking cap.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is the citizens' comments portion of the town council meeting. If you would like to address council, you address your comments to me, and through the chair, you have name, address, home address, in three minutes. Anybody here would like to do what? Oh, I have a call in that wants to...
I have a call in first.
Yeah, let's get that out of the way because it might take a minute.
Is that as good audio or... Hello, so I'm Daniel Moody. I live at 610 Deirdre Ave., and I'm concerned, citizen, bringing up the road that is essentially my backyard, which is the, with the Cambrias street. So one of the issues I wanted to bring up with this is that a 40 mile per hour four-lane road is, it's a pretty significant road to be bringing, well, to be bringing a lot of traffic, a lot of noise, and a lot of pollution backyard. And I'm wondering what kind of studies and analysis has been done, mentioning that there would be minimal impact due to this. I don't know, like, if we, sound is a significant factor. Of course, a four-lane road at 40 miles an hour will generate a significant amount of sound. There will be significant noise pollution. We also consider the safety of the houses and residents in that area. A lot of the families have children that'll be running around and playing in their backyards, and right now that it's completely safe with what is currently just obtained land, but if we suddenly have a high-speed road in very close proximity to everyone's backyard, it'll be a potential significant, if children are playing or animals are in backyard. And then, fellas, there's also the issue of security, and that right now is a significant risk for, you know, robbery or thievery to approach, but having a driveway-explanter road will make that significant. I suppose in conclusion, what I want to just bring up is, with the way it was presented to me, the road seems much more intrusive than what was originally presented. What was originally the toll, I was originally told that the plan would be for a 25 mile per hour road, that it would be two lanes, which would match Cambraya Street, which makes more sense, and so, because there's no, there's no reason to have a 40 mile per hour four-lane road leaning into a lane, 25 mile. There's no, there's just not that. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that at the very least, the road should match the characteristics of Cambraya Street, and that being 25 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done? Okay. Now, I believe you wanted to address council?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jeffrey Wilson. I live at 505 Cambraya Street. Moved here two years ago from Austin, Texas, so I'm fairly versed in not enough roads and overtrafficking. The area the road's presented to be built on is, as everyone knows, on Huckleberry Trail. I have two children. They often use that trail daily. We live right up on top of the hill, so we have, we have direct access visually, meaning I have to, as we sit in our porch swing, to the road crossing. There's already been several near misses from citizens being hit by cars, bicycles and such. Adding this road, you're going to add another crossing onto Huckleberry Trail. It's going to add more risk to our citizens. The road cost is obviously enormous, and given our current financial status as a country, as our town, I urge our council to be financially responsible. Citizens come first, their safety comes first, financial stability is part of that, I believe. Very much against the road. I think destroying the nature will destroy a lot of the value that Huckleberry Trail brings currently. I have lots of friends in the area that ride from Blacksburg to the area, and vice versa. I see people every day, go to the area and rent the bicycles and go that way. So destroying the trees and putting in a massive road, which, according to order, is a massive road, a high-speed area, endangering our citizens, destroying the neighborhood's value, destroying the home values. I can come up with a dozen logical reasons not to have the road, and I'm having a real hard time finding a benefit. So I'd really like to ask the question, is this a need, or is this a nice-to-have? And if it's a nice-to-have, how could we even consider the financial liability of this road? I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Ratcliffe, 1560 Diana Drive. Good afternoon. I'm here today to make remarks about issues we've had with our home builder, Robert Frayland. I sent each of you an email in the afternoon of July 1st regarding these issues. Robert Frayland responded the morning of July 1st with a resolution of using the same subcontractor that caused the reported issues throughout our entire home. There was no mention of resolving any underlying issues, only the floor covering. After contacting this council and town engineer the evening of July 1st, Frayland seemed to have changed their mind on their resolution offer. They have provided us with a resolution to have our floors replaced by a different subcontractor and to resolve any underlying issues. I am concerned for myself and future consumers that it took over six months for this company to offer an acceptable resolution and only upon learning that the town council had been contacted. Why would it take six months to get a true resolution? We're also having yard issues. Most of our yard is growing grass except for our side yard and backyard. We're currently paying a company to help treat the yard, and they have said that they're... We're currently paying a company to help treat the yard, and they have said that their grass will not grow in our problem areas due to our yard consisting of mainly gravel. The side yard holds water for days after it rains, preventing grass from growing. We also have a sinkage around these sewer lines, and Frayland continues to say that that is our problem. This problem should not be our problem at all. This should be their fault for not providing an established yard. With all this in mind, we're requesting that Frayland not be approved for any new buildings until all of our problems are resolved. This is not the first time this town council has had this request, due to other homeowners also having issues with Frayland. Frayland may be using a different name, Magnolia Point Community LLC, but how they treat their buyers and not upholding their promises, which has been well documented from me and other buyers, has not improved. So are there any questions from the email I sent?
Robert, I'd like to, I appreciate seeing you here tonight. He and I have had conversations several times during the last couple of weeks. And I've also had several conversations with Mr. Frayland during the last couple of weeks. Now, Mr. Frayland called me up four or five days ago. And he said that you two had touch base, and that you were satisfied, I'm specifically going to go after the floor. You didn't mention that.
Sure.
But yet, on that, and how that is, is that true? Have you two talked, and are you pleased with what?
Yes, the subcontract did come out today, but like, as I mentioned, it took them six months, and nothing got resolved until they knew that you all were contacted.
So you are happy with that?
Correct, yes.
But you just are sad, it took so long for you...
Yes. And now we're having yard issues, so how am I going to have to wait another six months for that to get resolved?
Have you had, are you still in contact with him about the yard as well?
Um, yes, we have someone out coming out tomorrow, but they're just looking at it and telling us if they're going to fix it or not.
I appreciate you coming on here today to respond to us.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else to address council? Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, come on in.
Go ahead, please. No, sir. No, we just, this forum was here, and I'm not sure what Mr. Woodrum wants to do.
Okay. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Brian McHale from 5211 South Concourse Drive in Roanoke. Because as most of you know, I'm the COO of our Frayland Companies. I was just coming here to address any comments or concerns from the community. So glad to hear Mr. Ratcliffe's concerns about his yard. As you mentioned, we do have someone going out tomorrow, and we've made a commitment that we're going to make him happy with the condition of his yard, despite, you know, what his yard warranty may state and otherwise. By the goodwill, we'll make sure he's happy. So I take my job very seriously. I'm here to solve problems. And if you know of any problems that haven't been stated here, that are unaddressed, I would love to hear about them. I think you all have my contact info. And we are not perfect, as we've said many times before. I won't belabor or bore you with the details of why it took so long, but happy to talk to any of you individually about that matter. If you have any questions for me, again, I'm here just to answer that.
You hang around, in case any other issues come up tonight.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I do have a question before you.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have a, more than one citizen contact me about Frayland properties. And the question was brought up of how many other permits have been denied by other municipalities around us for Frayland in the last, say, five years?
Oh, for permits for like a rezoning, for example, or?
Developments, rezoning.
Developments. Um, I've been with the company five years. I'm not aware of any permits being denied. We've had certificates of occupancy held up here and there for various things, you know, maybe the yard wasn't put in properly or graded to the satisfaction of the, of the plan. But I've never heard of a development being held up.
Is that something that you would mind checking on to be sure and let council know?
Sure.
So we can get back with those that inquired? I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot to mention too, there was one lady that contacted, I won't name her, contacted council with some concerns, and I did correspond with her. I talked over the phone, and I'll correspond with her this week, and I believe she's satisfied. Again, if you hear otherwise, I'd love to know about that.
I've also talked to her, and I talked to her about a week ago, and she did seem to be, be pleased with what things have been done. And I'm not sure if you remember, but last Christmas, there were a number of people that contacted me concerning different things that were going on, that they were unhappy with. And I have to say that this gentleman here went over there and checked on them, you know, house by house almost, to make sure things were correct. And I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you for saying that.
And we're just hoping that these, we're going to get ahead of the game on all these things from that one. And these apartment complexes, I'm going to try to put in, we're going to have a full-time push in there once a month. And, you know, hopefully, we've been burdened once, but we're not going to be burdened twice.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's it. I'm here too.
Okay, I appreciate it.
To make sure it happens. Thank you.
Gentlemen, over in the corner, over here. You have a, yes, sir. Name and address, and...
The name is, oh, sorry. Henry Gess on 810 College Street. And Mr. Mayor, I want to apologize earlier when I greeted you with first name. We kind of go back a little bit when I was a contract manager with the news messenger. We're stating that my background in Montgomery County goes back to 1979, 1980. In Roanoke, just to give you a little background on myself, I was in contract manufacturing in the apparel industry. Wayne had mentioned, and forgive me using first names, but everybody here is so personal when it came out and chatted with us on College Street post the flood of May 24. He mentioned that it's a slow vessel, and I understood that, because I was in charge of both offshore production of dresses and garments, as well as domestic contract. My footprint here in Montgomery County goes back to where the county municipal building is, was an Imperial Ready. And I had contractors there, as well as Thornhill. We all worked together. So the money, the revenue, the return on investment of projects here in Montgomery County goes back to when I was in my twenties, right out of college. So with that being said, there is a lot of work that needs to be done. Wayne's presentation, Mr. Nelson's presentation, was on target. I would request, because I think from what I've heard, and thank you again, council, for allowing us, and Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. The only thing that has been brought to the table today with town council is the life-threatening situation, without overdramatizing it, on College Street. We've always, we've already had a loss of life. We don't need to have more. My wife was going to mention a situation that she may still, but our situation on College Street could be detrimental. So thank you for the one minute, and I would like to go ahead and yield, after I make this statement, that with the, I've already mentioned to Wayne my suggestions, being in marketing and cost accounting, and working with boards of directors, sitting on boards of directors here on two in the New River Valley, we have to be concerned with costs. There's a $7 million grant that was already granted for the watershed issue post-flooding. A portion of that could be taken care of, and use of a pond, that I had already mentioned to Wayne, Will, and Michael as well when it came out. Very caring. So I want to appreciate what the town council's doing. The ear to the stone, Mr. Mayor, and Wayne, and Will, and Michael, you're very caring and wanting to make sure this is taken care of. It is a vessel, but we might need to move a little faster because of potential loss of life, without our yielding.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Grace Woodrum. I live at 830 College Street. I just, I guess I had a question about the Hickock Street. I know, Mr. Nelson, you had mentioned that it, like Henry said, it's a vessel and it's going to take time. I understand that Hickock Street, those businesses are being flooded, and that, I guess the piping underneath needs to be expanded. My question is, when will that be, you know, when will that project start? So the upstreet on College Street project can get started. And I thank you, Mr. Hubbard, for bringing your pictures, that I sent you guys a letter and a couple of pictures. And I know one that I sent, I'm sure you can't see it, but if you guys have it, it just shows where the manholes are, water's just coming above, and the water meters are overflowing. And some of these pictures were taken on May 24th, and others were taken, like, right after we moved in in October. Like, my husband and I have just started living there for eight years, and, or not eight years, I'm sorry, eight months. So my question is, you know, it was a little concerning after we, before our fences were put in, before we were going to, you know, spend thousands of dollars to do that. It was concerning to see that some manholes were, you know, overflowing water, and water meters were, you know, not keeping their tops on. So my, I guess my question is, like, when is it possible to give, you know, a timeline when that project will be started, if anyone knows, for Hickock?
2021, early 2021, late 2020?
Construction in the years.
When?
It will begin in a, in a year, next year.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that's all I have to say. Do you have anything to say, person?
Thank you, Mr. Woodrum.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
My name is Preston Woodrum. I live at 830 College Street. Originally, I wasn't going to speak, because I was a bit afraid of some things that I shouldn't say. But Mr. Nelson, with the presentation, should say thank you. That was wonderful. It gave me, I'm a visual learner, so it gave me something to look at, something to understand, helped me out a lot. I'm looking so forward to see the work done, impact us, and everyone else on the street. On behalf of me, my wife, my neighbors, my dog, we look forward to it. So looking forward to seeing some things inside of drainage, be taken down. I know my fence was in front of one. I'm not going to go into details about that, but that was my fence in that picture that was cut out. I have a neighbor, I'm not going to mention who it is, but I'm disappointed to see that her fence is right back up.
With more blockage.
With more blockage, and it hasn't been asked to be removed. Especially with that being the main contributor to what had happened. So I'd like to see that could, maybe just that one process, that immediate action, maybe have that one spot, that one part sped up. And everything else, I'm so pleased, and I want to thank you all for your thoughts and prayers. And it's not me getting something done, you guys getting something done, is we getting something done together. Because I love this town, I've grown up in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I know you're being a police officer, and you're taking the time to come over here with your wife and express how you feel about this. I thank you for bringing out, you know, pictures, and pictures, and letters, and stuff that really helps put a picture of what you're actually going through right now, and we're sorry that you're going through that.
Especially, thank you.
And I am so sorry to hear and see, because I did go by the properties this week to see that that fence was put back up on the neighbor's property.
It was put up maybe two weeks after.
Yeah. And he was, he's actually for sale, and he's actually under contract, correct?
He's under contract.
Yeah. And so I hope that they do, they do mention that to the new owners.
I mean, I'm sure they have no idea what they're getting themselves into.
Well, as a realtor, you should be saying that, so, but I'm speaking for myself. So, and I'm, I'm thank you, I thank you for coming out here today.
Of course, thank you all. I'd like to say something, remember, this committee, Mr. Nelson, I can't express. I have a dog myself, and I can't imagine not being without, or I can't even imagine what happened to you. But I want you to rest assured, I mean, this is on my front burner, and as soon as staff brings the stormwater committee, it's not going to be two weeks, as soon as it's presented to us, and as we be asked come early fall, where are the plans with this, it's going to be forwarded on the council for the next meeting. So this is something that we're not taking lightly, that we are going to push forward with, and hopefully we can get some options sooner rather than later.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
The pictures that she sent me, somehow in my mind, I felt that you sent pictures to everybody, but I think I made a call, and maybe at the end of this meeting, Mr. Nelson, would you pass those around, if any of the council wants to see them?
So I, I did send them to each council member.
Oh, they did? Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Like, you know, nobody likes more ordinances. And I'm glad Wayne brought up that there is no fence ordinance, but it could be something we assign the planning commission as a council, not as one individual saying. Again, I don't like more ordinances, but hearing that if a fence played a role in this, and it's back up to where it was originally, where you can't really get much of a flow out of there, that is a concern. And nobody likes to tell homeowners what they can or can't do, but I'm sure there's other municipalities out there that have fence ordinances. So that might be something council would want to consider, pushing as a group, pushing this on the planning commission to investigate some sort of ordinance. And with... I won't bring it up.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that point, with that being brought up, with her fence. I understand the process. My dad explained to me the process, because, you know, you send out a ladder, or you go speak with them, and what if they just, say, kick rocks? You know, what, what's going to be done in order to get, get the fence down, sort of thing? Does that make sense, right? So if they have a fence that caused this, and my fence, I'll even admit, my fence could have contributed to it as well. If they sit there and say, kick rocks, they're not taking my fence down, because I sold my house, or because the new owner says, no, I bought the house because I've got dogs and I don't like the fence, then what then can be done?
Thank you.
And I like your solution, what you guys say with your fence, was very smart.
Well, I mean, we still get skunks, and our other dog got sprayed on Monday, so it's still interesting to deal with that, but, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Susan Gass. I live at 810...
You can pull the mic down a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, I have a soft voice, too. My name is Susan Gass, and I live at 810 College Street. I'm neighbors to the Woodrooms. And we appreciate their letter that they sent out, that we could be here tonight and speak before you, and we thank you very much for all that you're doing. There was three things I thought of, that we were glad that it had not rained since the flood, that the flood was not worse than it could have been, and even though we need rain, that it has not been any drenching rain since that time. We have a neighbor who has a young daughter, granddaughter, she's about four, and if she had been out in the weather with this flood that came, there could have been another loss of life. My husband and I have lived there since 2006, so we have seen so much rain, our backyard still has mud. So there's, when you go out to the shed, your, your feet are all walking in mud. So the water situation is something we've dealt with all of these years, 14 years. We love our home, we don't want to move, we enjoy our neighbors, and we feel for our neighbors and what they have had to go through. And much of the water went beyond two of our neighbors. So even their basements, we know flooded the evening of this particular flood. So we are grateful that you're looking at it, because of being citizens and knowing that this is an issue, and knowing that it could be taken care of sooner than later. And especially, as was mentioned by Mr. Showalter, that hopefully early fall, we can get some, some answers to some of the issues that we're having to deal with over there. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak. My name is Gerald Crowe, 950 College Street. I don't think we had as bad a water as they have had. We lived there for about three years. Unfortunately, it was not disclosed. We moved there about the condition we knew nothing about. We have been several times flooded this last time, and it was like a river flung through the back door. And due to this, we now have black mold. We run a de-humidifier, sense that, but we have black mold growing in our downstairs, our family room downstairs. So it's just not a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Matthew Hicks, 607 and a half, South Franklin Street. I pay about $12,500 a year in taxes. I'm heavily invested, heavily invested in the town.
Yeah, move it up, man. Thank you.
Heavily invested in the town, so I'm very concerned on how our tax dollars are always spent. are already spent, not now, but for the next thirty years, because I'm heavily invested here. Um, not that you know who I am, originally from Fredericksburg, Virginia, father's a life member of the rescue squad, founding member of the home, the Thurman, Thurman Bears, the home and shelter there, very big town advocate, fourth generation mechanic, that's a little background. I would like to, because I don't know where to do this, because I'm just a citizen, I don't ever want to be in your job, trust me, formally request some kind of public meeting just to inform us how the cost of the park is actually gonna be paid on the yearly basis. Can you just give us a quick, five-minute breakdown, so the public will understand? Because right now, I don't think they have a clue. Park is great, I'm all for development, let's grow, but let's be very planned and, and careful how we do that. Also like to know.
There'll be a public meeting on it.
Great, great.
And explain the finances if, if, if it's approved, how it's financed and how it's gonna.
And then the other part of that would be, is how we're gonna pay for that debt, is it a twenty-year, thirty-year plan, but kinda want to know that upfront before we just jump the gun, so would like to ask.
We'll know all that.
Okay, okay, great. Um, side note, I know the court hall is part of the committee, this is more of a rhetorical question for Reed, but I don't know how that works with him being in the backside of it, but also part of this committee and his relatives gonna benefit from concession sales, and I know he's trying to push this through or ram it through without any comments from the town, I don't know how that works, or, again, I'm not in your position.
There is nothing set in stone about concessions, about anything else on this new park.
Okay, great.
And I would imagine that probably would be subcontracted at a little bit higher level.
Okay.
I'm worried.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know if it's gonna, we don't know if we're gonna build it yet.
Matt, I would say you definitely had anything subtract with your wife being council.
To be honest with you, I tried to get her to stay away from it, and I don't want to talk to her about it, because it causes a lot of internal turmoil. I let her do her job when I do mine. As Randy fairly well knows, I'm some of rich royalty, and I take care of all my properties, so if you ever have a question about property, I wish you'd come to me first, that's publicly, privately, whatever. Um, with regard to that, just commenting, it doesn't matter now, hill of beans, but what was mentioned last week about the FOIA, FOIA forms regarding Johanna Hicks, there was a false statement made, maybe it was taken out of context, but Randy said that Johanna found the paper at home and threw it away, that was never said, never publicized. Again, it doesn't make it hill of beans now, it's over and done with, I want to set the record straight. Um, one other thing I'd like to, just because I'm a little frustrated with what I've seen, is there any way I can get a formal description of what Randy's job description is? Um, I'd like to know what exactly he does for the town, how he does it. I think that should be public inform- information. What I've seen is, uh, recently, it seems like he jumps at any email, whether it's a town citizen, a county citizen, not even anyone from our town, and then there's a direct action from him. There's several business owners right down here that I can name or bring them up here that some email's been sent, and then they're frust, they're fussed at by the town manager, I just don't think that's right, that's not good for us working together. Um, that's pretty much it. Um, the last thing is that, of course, you know, this is public knowledge, this is criminal, it's civil, Greg Revan has assault charges on him, and also, uh, Dan Irvin does, and Dan Irvin has made many threats to her, so Reed, I'd hope that you guys are protecting her as a councilwoman against this. We've gone to the police, we've gone to the state police for any protection we can get. So I'd like to see those emails and that nonsense just stop and be over and done with, that's a personal matter. Thank you for your time, have a great day.
Christine Waltz, thirteen seventy Rigby Street. Um, tonight you all will be having a discussion and action on FOIAs. Um, I made a FOIA request back in May of two thousand seventeen, and I, I'm gonna preface this by saying, most of the time when I seek information, I get a lot, I, when I talk to Melissa about stuff, she gives me the information I need, but there have been instances where you all have charged for FOIA before. So I'm not sure how you're charging some citizens for FOIA without having a FOIA, uh, policy, and why all of a sudden now we're discussing it, when you've already been charging citizens. Um, I have the invoice with me, you all want to take a look at it, and I asked back when this, when I was asked to pay for this, if there was something that would determine whe- whether you were charged or not charged. So it's not new information, and I'm, I'm kind of concerned that if it's done, that it's done fairly and not done politically, um, because I know that there's been a lot of emails back and forth, and it really shouldn't be that way. When citizens want information, they should be able to get it, and they shouldn't be charged for it, based on whether or not the town thinks it's in their interest to give that information.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify, Randy, no information is withheld correctly? You're concerned Christine was, the cost of it, not the information?
Well, my concern is that you're, you're charging people now and supposedly there's no policy, that's why you're discussing it, is that they're going, okay, now it's taking time, it's always taking time to do a FOIA request, so how are you deciding, up till now, how much to charge?
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, that you're, you've never been short information.
No, no, I will say this, every time I've, I've, for the most part, every time I've come here and I've asked for information, I've been able to get it without a problem, I'm not complaining about the staff not giving it up.
I'll say probably we will have a set, if, I, I, is this new, or is this, have we had this in place?
I'd say we had a informal policy previously, this is really to more formalize it and to just make sure we are being consistent with it. We have historically charged for FOIA requests, although I will say, it really depends on the nature of the request. If somebody came into the office and simply wanted a one-sheet document, we would probably just give it to them, uh, you know, wouldn't give them a charge for that. If there's a request that takes a substantial amount of time, then, then we would charge for that. Uh, I think basically traditionally, we use fifteen-minute increments or so of time, if, like I say, there is a charge, uh, I, I, like I say, I guess a nominal fee, you know, something like fifteen minutes for, for a copy, I don't think it's really worth staff time at the, the counter downstairs and finance to ring it up, to be honest.
But they have to research thousands of emails and hours and hours of times, yes, we're gonna set a payment on it.
If staff does have to spend.
This is four weeks' worth of information that I was seeking a four-week period, it wasn't like I was asking for two weeks.
We, we get requests for all emails for the last ten years.
Yeah, but that wasn't what this.
Well, no, I understand, but if, if it will cost, the cost of FOIAs will probably be more consistent.
You know, I will state, we do get requests like, we want all your emails for the last ten years, which is, you know, hundreds of thousands of emails, which would take a, a huge amount of staff time to go through. Make sure that there's not confidential information in there related to personnel, economic development, legal matter, it matters, anything like that.
We're getting into the second part of the meeting, we're not over, I don't remember what, we're not done yet. Thank you, Christine. Anyone else? Close of public hearings, uh, committee reports. Mr. Bishop, street committee, with the assistance from Mr. Drake.
Sir.
And Mr. Warren, and Ed Al.
So we have three, excuse me, so we have three plats tonight. The first plat is located at twenty-three forty-seven Roanoke Street. This is Hardee's, this is the Hardee's lot. Um, the, the, the proposed plat here is a simple subdivision plat to carve out what's shown here as parcel B. Um, so the end result would be two parcels, the remaining parent parcel A, this would remain as Hardee's, parcel B would be carved out, which would allow for, um, this area to be developed. We, we currently do have a commercial development, a site plan in for review, um, so, so that's what we have here. Uh, parcel B would have street frontage on Roanoke Street, it would have access to Roanoke Street. Parcel B and A would have cross-access easements, which would allow, uh, vehicle parking to go across both. Um, this, this does conform to the zoning ordinance. The street committee assisting of.
You take some mask off and tell us.
All right, if you can't hear me. All right, the street committee has reviewed this and recommended it be approved, and for those that's not familiar, that they is more of a restaurant, you see the attractive trails part, all the time, so they give you a reference.
We think there's a potential use for a, it's kind of tight-lipped, but there's a use for that product, that, that lot, we think.
There is, yes, sir.
So, so is that a form of a motion?
That is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, uh, on this request, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, I'm zero. Next.
The second subdivision plat is the subdivision plat of Kensington Phase Nine. This is located in the Kensington subdivision, um, on, on the corner of Bishop's Gate Road and Diana Drive, uh, for a, for a point of reference, the, the water tower is, is essentially right above, off-screen there. Um, this, this subdivision plat would create seven lots, this property is zoned R1, these, these would be single-family dwellings. Um, to the, to the back of the property is an open space area, um, that serves the greater Kensington development, there, there is a trail, there's, there's a trail easement that would serve this property. Bishop's Gate Road and Diana Drive are existing streets, existing right-of-way, so there is no additional street right-of-way to be dedicated. Um, with the plats, there are some public utility and some drain easements that would be, that would be dedicated as part of this plating, um, but again, it would create seven lots, and these would be seven single-family, uh, housing units.
And who are you questioning this?
It's part of the group Kensington.
That, that's correct, it's part, right, that, this, this is part of the Kensington, so the, the property owner is the Freland Development Team.
Does that have sidewalks somewhere that I cannot see?
I don't think they have the.
That, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, so the, the Kensington development has a trail system, so, so, um, for instance, in this area, there is a, there is a trail, um, that would tie in and it, it runs further down.
I think this is just to allow them to, to split the lots, we've got no, we've, we've got no plans, we've got nothing on the table yet.
No, there is a, there is a site plan that's, that's been submitted and, and reviewed in conjunction with the subdivision plat.
Is that going to be at the planning commission sometime soon?
No, this would be a by right development that's already been approved, um, it, it would still need to conform to all the town, town standards in terms of zoning setbacks, area stormwater regulations, erosion and sediment control.
Thank you, Will.
There, there are still lots in Kensington that they have not completed, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Yes, based on the information that the street committee has received, we, uh, make, I'm making a recommendation for approval.
It's a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Code's four one, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
This last subdivision plat is located at one hundred South Franklin Street, um, actually, Ms. Dixon was here earlier today, um, but this is the, the property owned by the Dixons, it's the big, it's the big white house that has the, the, the smaller two-story, um, dwelling on the property. Uh, this, this property was granted a conditional use permit in September of last year for residential use. Um, the, the subdivision plat, uh, before you right now would, would split this lot, so it would, it, it would place the large house on its own lot and would, would the, the smaller, the smaller unit would, would at that point be on its own lot. As part of the renovations that, that they've, um, that they've performed, they have installed separate water and sewer connections to both of these dwellings, um, for this purpose to allow them to function as separate properties. Um, so again, both have their own parking areas, um, but this would split the lot and, and, uh, would allow for either or both to be sold individually.
All right, based on the information, the street committee, uh, approved this, I'll make a recommendation, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll get that some later, make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
That's fine, but thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion by mayor and council, I think we've canceled everything except the discussion of Freedom Information Act policy. Randy?
Uh, you should have copied the draft policy in front of you, and again, this is to really more formalize what we had as an informal policy previously.
I'm sorry, Randy, what is on that? I think I.
It's your, it's at your place.
I have the town seal in the upper left corner.
I can say a few things, Randy, too. I don't know if they are. Um, this, as Randy mentioned, I wasn't really prepared to speak on it tonight, but, um, we haven't had a policy for charging, we have at times charged for requests that take significant staff time. Um, FOIA used to be a very, very, very small percentage of my daily job duties, it is now probably seventy-five percent of what I do on a daily basis, so the purpose of this policy is to formalize a charging policy because we are getting so many more requests. Um, this, we didn't have, the, the fifteen minutes this mentions will charge for work generally that takes more than fifteen minutes of staff time, that was not the informal policy before. Um, I've been fulfilling requests mainly for free, except for requests that take several hours or days of staff time, so this would be new, and the, and the purpose to address the comments before is to make it consistent across the board, so I'm not determining what has become a significant request.
Is this consistent with our neighboring municipalities?
Yes, so we looked up, um, uh, policies that were published online, the city of Salem has theirs online, um, they do a very similar thing, we asked the town of Blacksburg for theirs, they don't publish their policy online, but this, uh, follows in line with theirs, and then we just looked, um, you kind of across the state for policies that are online, this follows several that we could find that were published.
Mr. Mayor, it's also consistent with the statute which expressly provides for fees just like this.
The code of Virginia and statute, tell me something.
Correct.
Very good. We haven't decided the labor costs, and I think that there's something we need to determine, I'm thinking forty dollars an hour, which is in or around a reasonable, plus copies, plus charge for the copies.
Well, I think that the, the idea of the charge is it's the actual charge for the production, you can't add on to extra costs to it.
Correct, and we were suggesting here that it would be the, um, lowest compensated employee qualified to perform the work.
Okay, so, but I think at some point, was qualified, doesn't necessarily mean the one that doesn't work, if you're doing seventy-five percent of the work, uh, we should be compensated, the town should be compensated for your loss of revenue or your loss of income and time for the town, that's the way I look at it.
I, I think the hope is to train additional staff who can help with FOIA requests, because we're receiving so many.
So I don't want to get into a varying scape, that's my whole issue, you know, well, if she does it, it's twenty bucks, but if I do it, it's ninety bucks, we'll have, you know, we either need to have a set charge or.
My opinion is that the fairest, um, and most, most consistent way to do that would be the lowest compensated person.
Well, can you tell us a number, because she's giving us examples of twenty, forty dollars, I guess, I think.
That's a, I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, and I'm actually, I would like to ask that question, too, because that's a, that's, that sounds kind of right to me, to ask, to, to have kind of a set number, a basic number that we may go by. Is it twenty dollars, is it thirty dollars, what is it?
So we'll, and Reed maybe jump in, too, but the statute, you know, specifies that it has to be the actual cost of, of, of producing the records, so that's why it would be the hourly salary of the person doing the work, um, so instead of creating a.
If it were Randy, for example, it, it would be a higher charge, if Randy's invoice was required, if it was me, it might be a higher charge, but it just depends on, on the.
It's twenty cents an hour, and that's about what we get for this job.
Yeah, exactly.
Then that meets the gap, as if Randy was the only one available to do it.
Yeah, if it was a.
Pay his cost.
Something that was particular to Randy's experience and knowledge and something you needed Randy to review, then, then you.
And it's not always me doing requests, you know, if it's a fina, it's a request for financial records, it could be Val, you know, it depends. You know, it depends, it's not necessarily me. But the requests generally come in to me and then I distribute them as needed.
But it's all based on you if it goes to Val, right? All based on your...
It would be based on the lowest compensated employee who could have pulled the records. So, Val did the work, but if someone else in her department could have, it would be based on that person's salary, hourly salary.
So, that does mean that if you're gonna be starting to charge for this, which I completely agree you should charge the citizens that are requesting for this, on the public, not the like the officials for necessarily to do our job. As far as this goes, I guess that means that you're gonna start checking IDs or checking where they live for sure and make sure that they are not fake people, correct?
That has not been something I've done in the past, but...
Well, I mean, if you're gonna start charging...
Well, can we settle the cost first before we get into who?
There's not a dollar, what I'm hearing is not a dollar figure we can settle.
Right.
So, it's gonna be a...
It could be 12, 15 an hour, it could be 75.
How can you prove it if somebody requests a FOIA request says, "Well, I don't want to pay this proof to me why?"
We would complete an invoice for how many hours was done, at what hourly rate.
And what, or what department, basically.
Right.
And that is not, the information is not released until the invoice is paid, is that correct?
The information is released, but there's a, let me find it.
The first time.
Right, the first time information is released, according to state code we're following here. It's if the requester owes the money from a previous FOIA request that remained unpaid for more than 30 days, we shall require payment of past due bill before another request.
Yeah, whatever you want to do, just not, I don't like, there's a variety on this thing. I mean, and I understand, but do you have a billing, like if you assign Billy Hanks to do it?
I think they kind of oversee and whatever we put, override whatever we put out.
But is there an individual job sheet? Like if XYZ employee is working on this one, it's his job and he did this for 25 hours and then you had to do some other work, 15 hours, on your salary or on that he couldn't do?
It could be two employees' salaries, depending on if...
Do you average that out?
Yes, well, it'd be the hours for each individual employee that's involved.
That can handle that portion of the request.
Yeah, so it could be multiple.
Okay. Now, we're copying and charging for copies.
Yes, there's a section.
What is that figure?
That, we have a, I'm sorry, I should have printed that, but we have a fee schedule that's been published on our website for copies for other people who come in and get, you know, copies of plats or different things. And that it's all online at this link and depends on what's being copied. I think it's 10 cents a page, but...
For eight and a half, by law, it depends a page.
It pays a big markup or whatever, it's like four bucks, like tangled two dollars.
Well, I would like to see even if we request, so we pay. And here's the reason, you know, if I got a friend that says, "Hey, I really want to find this, but I don't want to pay 40 bucks, why don't you do it and I get it for free?"
I think the council should have to pay for it as well. I mean, if we require a citizenry or anybody to pay for it, we should be willing to pay for it as well. Who gets it free, right? Do the media still get it free?
Yeah, that's, we didn't put that in this policy. That's been how I've operated unless it's...
I think I would like to let council review the same and let's discuss it at another date.
Well, we have to have a public hearing on this anyway, don't we? Since it's gonna be a fee, no?
Well, town policy, yes, state code allows us to charge basically the coupon cost.
I just think there are too many unanswered questions for me. And it boils down to the hourly rate and it boils down to the copy, the cost per copy.
I personally think...
We understand the policy that says it's 10 cents a copy, then we need to immediately go up to about a dollar a copy on everything we do.
I do think that this is not just talking about me, but talking for the future town council members that may be here taking place in the years to come. My thing here is, for example, for me, when I requested the farmer's market bills, anything related to the farmer's market, that helped me do my job.
The cost is $900.
Well, and you were spending thousands of dollars on their printing and supplies, if you want to go there, but the point is, I think it helps...
Was that a FOIA request you put in?
Yeah.
I asked for the bills, but I'm just saying that can be a FOIA request because they took a while to find them. So, my question is, let's for say that was under the FOIA Information Act, and I wanted to do my job and find out how the other town council members did that in the past. I would really like to find information about it.
That's a FOIA request, but if you're gathering information on minutes which are available, but if you're requesting information that is not accessible by, I would assume, our town manager, then that is a FOIA request. And I would think if we're gonna require a citizen to pay this, we're gonna pay a FOIA request, too, as council members, that's fair. If it's general knowledge that you're looking to find knowledge about the history of a park, but if you're looking to find conversations either by Randy or you're doing it as a representative of a citizen who wants to skip out on the fee, then you're gonna submit a FOIA request and you're gonna pay for it just like them.
Well, I think that will be unethical to ask for somebody else, but...
But I mean, you should be able to get enough information from town management of programs or projects that we've done that Randy can provide you. This has to do with FOIA, this is separate from that. I would anticipate it's separate from that. Am I reading this wrong?
That's how I understand it.
I think this will help with the fake accounts, definitely. So, it's a nice...
So, what are we gonna do, council? What do you want to do?
I'd like to mull over it a little bit, like the mayor said personally.
Would we agree we do want to add language to it even for council members?
I would agree to that, yes.
If you request a FOIA, then you are going to be held accountable for paying that fee just like citizens?
Mm-hmm.
We, okay.
I'd like to get agreement from all council.
We already get complaints, you know, we...
Melissa, do you think you could tighten this up a little bit after hearing all this discussion?
Yeah, I can give it, Randy and Reed.
Only the two of us actually do want to include our...
And I think, really, the idea tonight was to get council input.
Okay. Yeah.
You weren't trying to get us to approve anything like that.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, you know, it's just the, I didn't understand the average cost of the lowest cost of whoever could have done the job here. You know, that still leads for discussion. You know, if you charge for what you do, and so it's, well, hell, could your assistant do that? Well, she's not authorized to do it, is that correct?
Well, she's the lowest paid member in your department, which is what you base it on.
No, they can do the work, they can do the work.
Right now, yes, the other member of my department does not have access to the email archiving system, but my goal is to get us to that stage.
We need to be fairly connected.
So, that, yes, in the future, when a request comes to me, it would be based off the lower salary in the department.
So, and let's say the Preservers Department, who can...
Yeah, I don't, that's a good question. I mean, Val would know the answer to that for me, but...
The assistant director of the department?
I think it's, yeah, it's based so much on what the request is, yeah.
Got you. So, there's a lot of nuances to this.
Right, and I think the ultimate goal is to provide information fairly and give citizens access to public documents, but to be consistent across the board so that I'm not making a decision on the fly with each request. You know, oh, this took me 10 hours, so it's now a significant request that requires charging, kind of situation.
Okay. Do you want direction to include council in this?
I think that's, you know, up to council. It was a part of the policy that was written.
I think you deserve it, we've done it for many items before, but I would like a nod of council or not, but yeah, I would like for council to be included in this FOIA request.
A FOIA request, yes.
We don't have to take, we can do a straw vote real quick, but I'd like to get everybody's feelings, either you can say, "I agree to it."
Yeah, three, four, three.
Mr. Bishop, Joanna?
You guys have been in here for a long time. And a lot of the information that you do, you kind of send emails back and forth and stuff like that. And I have found out, I haven't done really a lot of FOIA requests, I just have asked for few. And when I have asked for them, I have found out how you guys interact with each other. And that, to me, has helped me a lot to understand a little bit about you guys because obviously, for some reason or another, I, there is a lot that goes on behind the recording. There's a lot that goes in those emails. There's a lot of back-and-for conversation and stuff like that that I think sometimes, like a person like me, I feel like I'm left out.
Well, you can still get this. It's just that you're gonna pay what Chris Waltz allowed to pay. And that's fair. Why should I charge Chris Waltz when I'm not going to charge myself if I want to know what's going on with other council members, which are FOIA? That's not fair. I think if we're gonna ask Mr. Waltz to pay, we're gonna ask you to pay if you request it FOIA, I'm gonna pay if I request it FOIA. I think that's fair. So, it looks like you have your majority. Include council in there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, staff reports, town manager.
I'll just point out that we have received certification of the Virginia Values Veterans Program. We've been accepted into that. Just to like to thank our HR Director, Alicia Dolls, for basically getting us to participate in the program. I'll pass it around for council, take a look at. Just nice to, I guess, participate in the program and help out veterans with our hiring. Just want to also point out that the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste, Stormwater Committee, at their last meeting, we basically agreed to go ahead and move ahead with closure of the recycling sites that are still in town. Basically, right now, we still have one at Home Depot and at High School, so they're gonna be moving forward with removal of those. I have asked Craig Meadows, mentioned to him the possibility of our town council meeting with the Board of Supervisors and maybe even potentially the school board. Just date we mentioned as a possibility would be Monday, August 31st, if that would work for council. Just like to say, if you can, maybe...
Turn the restaurants open and let them pay for this.
Randy, is that a little too soon since we're sort of still, we're still coming out for...
It may be.
It could be, well, we have to wait and see. Not that there's a business that we made, but...
That is a possibility, all honesty. We thought that date was probably about the earliest we could really do anything, if you want to wait until September, and all honesty, I mean, I am...
I like to wait till after the first quarter.
Yes.
Because it could be, it could be a quickie.
Yes.
And I know that everybody's time is sacred to them, especially our supervisors, our time is, our school board, and I'd rather know that we're on the mend, okay? And that way, when we talk about certain projects we need to share together or what we would like to get to see done through the schools or that it's a reality or can become a reality in the future in lieu of being like, "Let's wait and see, let's meet at the end of five years." Because how long has it been since we've met?
Probably...
Three, two.
And that's just...
Two or three. We met at High School with them, I guess probably two years, three years ago.
Okay.
The other thing, contrary to that, the schools, I imagine, will be open by then. And I know I would like to get a good briefing on just how things are going and how it's all moved out, and the 31st would be a good way to get a good briefing on that.
See, if you can still get a briefing, if there's gonna be public comment, you can, I'm sure Dr. Mayor Meyer will be happy to meet with you. We can get a summary of that, but I would rather wait until we can actually, you know, have real discussions instead of wait and see, which I think is gonna happen in August. That's just my personal view.
Preference for October?
I would prefer October or even November, because that is after...
I think November, May, June, I think end of September. When is the quarter over, Will?
July, August, and September would be the first quarter. So, basically, October 1st.
Yeah, maybe sometime around that.
And in November, aren't they not coming back? I had a parent tell me that today.
The Texans?
Yeah, like as of Thanksgiving?
Texas, or...
Okay.
Shoot for the week of September the 15th. Let's see what you can come up with.
I appreciate it.
It's two weeks after the thing and, you know...
I hope everybody understands, I just don't want it to be a wait and see. We're there for an hour and it's very hard to get these groups together.
Okay. Well, Randy, just find a shot. You said the 31st. You said that, I mean, have you met with Craig and the school board to ask them what time?
I haven't talked to Dr. Meyer about it yet. Craig's really the only person I mentioned it to. Obviously, Dr. Meyer's probably here, so...
Okay. Report back to us.
Just also mention that we are just, basically Montgomery County, Blacksburg, and Christiansburg are discussing the CARES Act and some type of program for local businesses. I don't think we're gonna be ready for that at the next meeting, but hopefully in August that we should have something for you. We do want to do, I guess, kind of coordinated and joint effort just to be consistent. You know, I think it's just kind of an aim of fairness to the local businesses that we want to do the same thing for Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and the counties.
Okay.
You're looking into the mail stuff, right?
Yes. Just mentioned that the chiefs are here, Chief Hanks, Chief Cole, and Chief Sisson for departmental updates, if you care for those.
People still getting sick, Billy?
Oh, chief. I know it's been a long night, so we'll be very brief, but just want to give council, it's been a while since we've been before you. Just to give you an update on the Health Task Force, we continue to meet. We've dialed that back from seven days to sick days to three days a week now. We meet Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. Still doing some exhaustive testing, still doing two testings a week regionally. Done testing in Floyd today and tested nearly 200 people. We'll be at Blacksburg High School on Thursday, Giles next week, and Blacksburg High School as well next week. The health department's really getting into some business testing. They've worked diligently with that. They've worked very hard in the nursing homes, point of interest for them. Obviously, we know regionally, our numbers are starting to move upward. If you're watching the media, you know that.
Well, you're sitting at 150 now?
You're sitting at 200 in Montgomery County, just in Montgomery. But you have to look at, you know, the key test there, you have to look at the positive test rate. And we're still at 4% in the health district, and we've tested nearly 9,000 people, a lot of people, 9,000. So, and you're looking at 200 in Montgomery, 25 Floyd, 55 in Pulaski, 18 in Giles, positive cases. So, I think we're starting to build some herd immunity, in my opinion.
Once again, you still haven't been able to find out exactly pinpoint where, from where those cases are coming from, correct?
I mean, cases are coming from many different places. I mean, you have people traveling, coming back into the region, test positive, and then they'll do trace tracking on those individuals. So, that's, I mean, it comes from vacation, it comes from personal contact with citizens that live here. And it's, you know, the one thing that's staggered me, and it came out in our meeting on Monday, is that 35% of people that have tested positive for COVID-19 are asymptomatic. So, 35% of people have no clue that they have. So, you can have general contact with someone who's not symptomatic and the virus can spread. So, the importance of being masked and social distancing and then doing our part in our region, super important to us getting to a recovery. Any other questions about the task force and the work? The one thing that I will say, I've been out a couple of weeks, and that task force just keeps grinding, Chief Hanks and his staff, especially Curtis Witt. Curtis Witt has been phenomenal in the logistic planning for these testing sites. I've been overly impressed with Curtis's ability to plan and organize, so...
So, why don't we go get another test, why don't we have tests in Christiansburg? We're going all over the county. Why not get one? Why not get one on the home field?
Well, I mean, you got, the issues you have there, we had the New River Valley Mall. But now that the mall's back open, they're open, they don't want a COVID-19 testing site in their parking lot. Schools are a tough venue here because they had so many things going on. I think the philosophy of the task force is, we run them regionally. We'll be in Floyd, Giles, Montgomery County, which we consider Blacksburg High School to be Montgomery County. And if you live in Christiansburg, it's, it's a short drive to be tested.
We have those smart guys that go to those places. They'd probably like to have a home trip.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, we had, you know, even in Floyd today, we had several people from Christiansburg, Montgomery County in Floyd today. So, you know, it seems like if somebody wants tested, they're willing to go wherever they need to test.
But I will, I will bring that up to the task force.
Yeah, we can, we can bring it up and see. We just have to, you know, have to rework the site, you know, the mall site was perfect for what we were doing. But since the mall's reopened, you know, like Chief said, they don't want to sit in a parking lot with the test site. So we can set, you know, we can find another location and Curtis is real good about the logistics of being able to put that site together and get it set up for us. So we can bring that up, bring it up at our next meeting on Friday and see if we can do that in the future.
Okay. Just be nice to give the boys a break, not have to travel all day.
I understand.
Well, we request one thing for maybe either the next meeting is, is if you could get us maybe, I don't know if it's correct to put it on a webpage, but the testing that's going to, or the requirements for the policy of tech and Rafford, of students returning to campus, because there are certain procedures they're going to have in place for returning students. If we get, if you could get that from Dr. Russell and of course, the tech and Rafford representatives, sort of pass along to staff and us. So, you know, if there is any questions about the influx of students coming from everywhere into the region, what are the uniform, because they, there are set plans, and I've seen them. But I would like that, for council to see those as well, if there's ever any fear of a spike that may, I mean, or their procedure and policies that they're putting.
Council, do you want, do you want that, do you want that published on the website? Or do you just want it for council?
It's, it's really a, if, if, if we deem it nonviolent information for our community, I would like the information from both universities and even New River.
Like you said, it's there, it's there already, you know, because they've already set the age for students to come back. So we can get that for you.
Thank you. It would do us a good to learn that as well.
I wonder about the Hills parking lot. Is there that much going on up there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Private private parking lot, general, food line.
I guess.
It's fenced off pretty good, too.
That would be a good site.
I guess my question is, how much space do you actually need for a site like that?
I mean, we've adapted very well to very small sites. I mean, they're running testing out of the Pepper Street parking lot. I mean, the health department parking lot, they're running tests every day there. I mean, 15, 20, 25 tests. We can adapt to small locations.
We can adapt to about two acres, two acres to make it efficient. I mean, if you're running, if you're running over 150 people, then, then you've got a backup.
Right.
So we have to have places to be able to stage vehicles. So, you know, we need at least two acres to be able to do that and be able to have a loop around, have, have access in, access out, and in that staging access also. But we need, probably need at least two acres.
Not a lot of space like that around town, is it?
Still, still right now, everything, everything's being built, so.
What about DISH Network? Could we get permission there?
We discussed that, yeah, we discussed that early on, but what you're doing, if you use a DISH network, you're opening it up to the interstate, and people can see from the interstate, and you're going to get people to travel and see what's going on at DISH, and they're going to start coming off on branch exits, and then you'll have, you know, out of towners, and then that makes contact tracing a whole lot worse for the health department if someone comes back hospital. Because they make us try to track these people down. But we'll look, I mean, we can put it.
Is there any way that we can make a public comment to the citizens of Christiansburg? I'm more than sure that there is people that have more than one acre, maybe, you know, even Christiansburg Institute. How hard will it be just to even like see if they will allow us to do something like that? Or facilities in the town that we can speak with?
I think that's what you guys are doing. You're contacting individuals that you, you think that would work.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest with you, if I owned a business, especially a retail business, I don't think I would want you to get a COVID-19 test in my parking lot. Their business hours are even that. So we have to respect the privacy rights of citizens, but I do appreciate you guys asking around.
Yeah, we would. We'll check on it, see what we can do.
The day I watched you guys, I mean, it was outstanding how they moved the cars in and out, the flow was constant. It does take some room, it really does, but it just, you know, I don't know. It didn't take about a couple of seconds for it, and another car rolls in, and it's really outstanding how they've got the flow going. And it does take some room.
Run about 200 a day in a little less than three hours, so it's pretty smooth.
Alrighty. Chief Cole, anything? You got the staff members? God, we've heard everybody that's left, okay. Counsel reports, I'll start with the show, Walter.
I don't have it.
Okay. Mr. Hubbard?
While Chief, while Chief Hanks is here, I hope you don't mind me saying this. I'd like to say a few words about the aquatic center, about how it's open and they've got lanes going. Right now, it's all very smooth. You have to get an appointment and you can get your lane. And I just happened to be over there the other day, and Chief Hanks and I were shore swimming together, though he was about 20 yards ahead of me all the time. And he said that, you know, he says, this swimmer here, he's lost 30 pounds in the last couple of weeks. So it's good news for him.
Couple of weeks?
Couple, couple months.
Your son's medical has.
I'm the one talking, I can say it the way I want.
Your inspiration for the quarantine 15?
I tell you what, buddy, it's, it's been a challenge, but it's good.
That's, that's the thing you can do, I'm telling you.
Absolutely.
Randy?
I have one more thing. The ACE, you know, they are going to have sort of a 5K walk run during, during three different days, August the 7th to the 11th. And I have their email address, if anybody wanted to do that. And of course, we're trying to raise a little bit of money. And what is, what an outstanding job they do, and Christiansburg kids are there more than any other one. So at the end of this meeting, anybody who wants to pick up a sheet here, I'll be glad to give it to you. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Yes, there'll be a central business meeting tomorrow at 12:00. About Zoom video. That's all.
Ms. Hicks?
Took half my notes, Sam.
Took half of yours.
No, we had a arts committee meeting today, and it went very well, but right now, we're in the stages of review and trying to get the fundamentals. So we're not going to see a huge showing real quickly, but we want to make sure that foundation is good and solid before we proceed. So that was a, still a very good meeting today. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hicks?
I think with the planning commission meeting, we got that coming up next Monday to talk more about the school rezoning request. If anybody's interested one way or the other, it can be in a, if they want it or if they don't want it, we want to hear from the community, so that would be good. And that's it.
Couple of things, I understand that the United Way is going to set up the farmer's market on Thursday. That's what Sarah Bond had told me. And what they're doing is the, they're encouraging people to bring stuff for the stuff, the bus, going back, go back to school thing, so whatever supplies, you may want to put them there. I understand that they're, they're going to be there. I'm supposed to talk with Sarah and somebody on the radio tomorrow just briefly about the United Way and the farmer's market and other not-for-profits that we have here. Randy, I appreciate your research on the meals program. I know that we're still in the process on it, but, you know, I was glad to learn we just weren't buying meals out of Hardee's in Blacksburg and giving them to the customers, to citizens. So it was a special program, the special nutritionists, and all under state guidelines?
That's correct, and just like to stress, we were able to match, I guess, get additional funding because we did go through Millstone Kitchen, that they actually funded a month and a half of the meals themselves because we used their food pantry.
Okay.
They also got the CARES Act money paid for all these meals as well that you can get reverse.
The CARES Act money paid for a month, English Meta paid for a month, and the Millstone Kitchen paid for a month and a half. So that's basically three and a half months, months worth.
And then now you are looking into probably using a local restaurant, correct? Or local restaurants?
Well, you know, I guess we could look at that possibility, although the money actually, basically, the program stops into the month, the schedule starts.
So got a couple of it.
Okay. Alrighty, I think that's got everything, I appreciate everybody's time.
Well, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Alright.
So we got this, this was named to my husband, I was just a normal citizen, with credit card authorization form to pay our water bills, which he just got, he had to renew his credit card just because he changed the credit card. But when I was looking at the paperwork, I did not see my name on this paper. And that's exactly how I have been feeling, this is June, July now, and I just feel like I'm not acknowledged even to be in a paper. So I guess I would like for that.
I don't understand.
So that's a letter that we sent, that the letterhead that we sent from the town. The town of Christiansburg has all the town council members written down in the bottom part, and.
Your name isn't on it?
It's not in there.
Oh, so I thought you meant on the letter about the, okay, well, we'll remedy that very quickly. Here are all most of the other pieces of letterhead, that probably came out of the finance department. Tracy, will you handle that tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Darren?
Darren, are you done?
I have something else, but yeah, I have a question. I, I think, I know that we're not talking, we're not having a closed meeting today about the park, and I'm not going to talk about the park, but I am, I, I was talking to Randy this week, and he told me that we got 600, over 600 people that are in a payment plan for water bills right now. We also have over 40 people that are getting their waters shut off. That's 40 people or 40 families that won't be able to wash their hands in the middle of this pandemic. I'm also concerned about, I heard today that from Virginia Tech Transit, that, Virginia Transit, that the chances are third of, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, Shaw Walter, third of the people going to school, to Virginia Tech, only third of the people are going to be going in person to school. That's only 6,000 of students instead of the 20,000 normal people that will come to Virginia Tech. Also done.
You're getting this information?
From Virginia Transit, somebody that works.
I would recommend.
And I'm, I'm actually just like saying, mentioning.
I'd get it from a better source.
Okay.
And Randy actually, when's it leave, be the AZON meeting?
Next, when's?
I would almost encourage, Randy, since Virginia Tech does have an operation, their operation DP is there, that would be pertinent information. I wouldn't take it from a skeptical news source.
And then there is also news that we got even today, which reinforces that, that I, we have, we are able to have like online education, that the chances are we're going to have a lot of students that are not going to be able to come to school. So that's, there is like $100 million annually that they may lose. That was just from an email I received today, as well as somebody else that mentioned something today about that. All I'm saying is, I don't know what Virginia Tech is doing, and I don't really, but what I'm trying to say is that I'm really concerned about the economy for the next year. I'm concerned about our students not being able to go to school full-time, not being able to. A lot of people are getting unemployment, and they are getting extra $600, I believe, per week. That's going to stop soon. Courthouses are going to be open again for evictions. You got, I really talked to, because of real estate, I have been talking to several banks already, and they have mentioned to me that a lot of people, about 10 to 15% of the two banks that I've spoken to, they have said that the mortgage payments have been, not been made by cities, well, by people that own homes or businesses. And that, to me, just goes along with everything that's going on right now. We're in a crisis.
What banks did you talk to? You said you talked to a couple, can I get the names?
I'd rather not say it, because that's personal information.
I do want to address the student, that, that's all speculation that you have out there right now. And anything?
And I would like it for, for it to be actually like not there. But what I am seeing is, and it can be, you know, it, I know, I'm a, we are really getting the effects from Bradford. We have students that are not coming back, and that's a fact, because we manage properties.
You have renters that aren't returning to rent your facility, but that doesn't, you can't.
Oh, no, but I'm just saying, that's just a small.
But you can't speak for what the university is expecting to come by.
Well, all I'm saying is that we haven't even had 10% of the population with the coronavirus yet. And all I'm saying is, we got to be, continues to be very cautious, because I know this park went back somehow or another, is back in the table for some reason. And that's all I want you, you guys, just think about everything that's going on right now in our economy. Just think about it, because not everybody's able to.
Everything leads back to the park, which is not in the budget this year, even though it could, there could come up, anything can come up for discussion that wasn't included in the budget. Employee raises, anything, and we decided it ended in the first quarter. So again, I think that the health district, I think the universities, I think the municipalities are doing what they can to make sure that we protect our citizens. And, and I would encourage that you don't spit out speculation of what you've heard or what you're not willing to tell us, what banks, and are these banks repelling 10 to 20% of properties in, we're kind of Christiansburg, that's why I'm concerned.
I believe it's in the county, I don't think it's.
Who are the banks? Because I know a lot of people in the banking industry, I would like to.
I don't want to tell you that because they told me not to tell you. This is.
Is this something I can avoid? Or is this a general conversation?
What's the point of talking about it?
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, can we move on? Do you have anything else, Ms. Hicks?
I think that's it, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I got something.
Yes, you did.
And it's this word, Sam, it's not doing.
You're not normally in this thing yet, and I thought I was finished, but anyway, go ahead.
And if it was mentioned by staff before, I just want to say Franklin Street from the center of town down to Depot Street, the, the additional parking that was put in, which is new, okay? I'm not sure if it was talked about there in council, but I think it's incredible. And I know that there was quite a few parking spaces in front of Ms. Hicks now that didn't exist just a month ago, right?
They existed, they were just not.
Well, they weren't. If they're not mine, then they don't exist, so, and you had to put a tone out there. But I do want to appreciate staff thinking about our, our, our commercial properties downtown adding park, official parking, where if I'm driving, I can see it, that that is a parking place right now. It looked like there was additions added to several empty parcels down, down there.
14 spaces down there there?
So I just want, I just want to thank staff or if any council members were involved in it, like the street committee. That's it, thank you, I think it's great.
Is there any other business coming for council? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Everybody?